Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the April 17th, 2023 City of Kingston Planning Board Meeting. We'll begin the meeting with a Pledge of Allegiance, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, a few housekeeping notes. Exits are either side of the council chambers. If there's a need to exit the building, will we use a staircase on either side and go out to the outside of the building? We're not going to use the elevator. Bathrooms are to my right. And I ask that if folks have any conversations that need to be held, utilize one of the conference rooms that are at either side of the council chambers as well. I ask that all folks silence their cell phones at this time. Introductions. My name is Wayne Platt. I'm the chairman. We also have Charles Palaco, Robert Jacobson, Matt Gillis, Vince Archer, Sage Newkirk, and Andrew Harris. We also have Suzanne Cahill, who was the planning director, and Kyla D-Day, who was the assistant planner. Matt Jankowski is here now. He's the Assistant Corporation Counsel. Item number one on the agenda is the adoption of the March 20th, 2023 Planning Board Meeting minutes and transcripts. Everybody's had an opportunity to take a look at them. Any deletions or additions, questions? Seeing none, I'll make a motion that we adopt them. Do I have a second? Second by Charles Palaco. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. Okay. Under public hearings, item number two is 55 Hoffman Street, special permit renewal to operate an accessory apartment. Section block and lot is 56.26-10-10, secret determination, zone R1, Ward 5, Doreen Bridge is the applicant owner. Is there anybody besides the applicant owner wishing to speak on item number two? Okay. Hi, folks. Can you, you gotta turn your microphones on. And then, just as close as I'm doing this, these mics are terrible sometimes, so you really gotta get up close. Can you introduce yourselves, please, for the record?
I'm Doreen Bridge.
Okay.
This is Colin Reeve.
Okay, you can bring these microphones down to you, too. All right, so tell us what your, okay, this, the original renewal was in a, this is a renewal. The original permit was, this is a one-year thing, right, that they do? Yeah, so it was last year. Are there any changes to the previous?
No, I'm almost, I need just one more month to complete everything. I have two deaths at the same time, so I kind of put work behind my husband, my mom died two weeks after. So that's all of the work, but I have, I need just one more month to complete. The building is almost finished. The plumbing is done.
You're gonna have to pull that mic in closer, ma'am.
The plumbing is finished and the electrical work is already completed, flooring, and it's just some little ends are not supposed to complete. So I'm on completion right now.
Okay. So the, the current renewal was for 18 months, and staff is comfortable and recommending that we go with another 18-month term for that? Everybody sound, feel good with that? Okay. All right, anything else, Sue? Okay. So, let me see. Okay. So under seeker, this is a type-two action, so no further review of the board is required. At this time, I'll make a motion that we approve item number two for a period of 18 months with all original conditions carried forward. Do I have a second on that? Second by Robert Jacobson. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Item number three is 135-145 Florence Street, special permit for cellular antennas on the water tower. Section block and lot is 48.74-4-14.200, secret determination, zone double R, Ward seven, Centerline Communications in Perrin's, William Hurley is the applicant, City of Kingston is the owner. Is there anybody besides the applicant or owner wishing to speak on item number three? Okay. Okay. Hi.
Hello.
How are you? What's that? Yeah, that's why I said, I said, is there anybody besides the applicant owner? Okay. Can you introduce yourself, please?
Kimberly Reevek, R-E-V-A-K, from Centerline Communications, representing AT&amp;T.
Okay. So there's gonna be some changes on the, on the tower?
Correct. We have to do an antenna change on the existing communication tower or facility that's located on the water tank at the water department on Florence Street. Through that process of applying for a building permit, we were advised that the special-use permit expired back in 2020 and through COVID and things like that. I'm sure it got lost in the shuffle. So we are here to reapply or reinstate that special-use permit or get another one. I'm not sure how you guys consider it a new one or reinstated of the old one.
Okay.
And they, they do have the authority from the water department that was in the application materials, so there's no issue there.
So there's gonna be old ones removed, new ones put in, is that?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions?
Well, there, there are co-hosts on this as well?
Nope, we're good. Okay. What was the, what was the term before? I mean, the reason why it's not a renewal is because it expired, right? Okay. Can we go five years?
Five. Do you know what the term of your lease is?
Pardon me?
The term of your lease.
They're typically about 45 years. So I'm not sure how much longer is left, but I certainly could get back to you on that. I'm not sure.
Well, that seems to be a good ballpark, 45 years, so. What do you want to go with, folks? You wanna do an unlimited unless something?
Yeah, the facility already exists. It's simply just upgrading an antenna that's located on the existing facility.
Yeah.
So through the application process of applying for a building permit to do that antenna swap, we were just notified that we needed to renew or extend or reestablish that special-use permit.
Consider it to continue in perpetuity as long as the lease remains active and they make no changes. Any changes would return back to the board for an amendment. Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah. So we'll just make it open-ended, all right? And if there's changes that are made in the future to, you're pulling stuff out, putting new devices in, or ownership changes or the lease changes, then the new, the new people would have to come before the board, so, okay?
Yep.
All right. All that verbiage, that is a motion on, well, I gotta do a seeker first, so let's do seeker first. All right, under seeker, this is also a type-two action, so no further review of the board is required. So at this time, I'll make a motion that we approve item number three in perpetuity. And that is a motion. Things change, come back.
With Board Policy 6, and I would just also add in, any contact information be updated if that changes as well.
I'll add that to the motion as well. Do I have a second on that? Second by Charles Palaco. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right. Item number four is 572 Broadway, special permit to operate a short-term rental. Section block and lot is 56.25-4-15, secret determination, zone C2, mixed-use overlay district, Broadway overlay district. Joe Deegan is the applicant. New Lights on Broadway is the owner. Anybody besides the owner or applicant wishing to speak on item number four? Nobody's coming. Joe Deegan is here, welcome. How are you?
How's everybody tonight?
Good.
Good. Thanks for having me.
All right. So what do you got? What do you got going on there?
Like to make the third floor of the building a short-term rental.
Okay.
Per the application.
Then it's a rather big space, too, right? It's a?
It's a 3,200 square foot apartment. It's kinda big. It's the entire third floor of the building.
Okay.
So it's currently all one unit?
Always has been.
Always has been, and so it's really, you're not doing any interior modifications. You're real, basically just changing it to a short-term rental.
Yeah, we, a year ago, filed with the building department, we made some interior renos, spruced the place up quite a bit, but it's always to the, according to Ed Ford, it was built for the Knights of the Pythians. So that was like a modern-day Kiwanis Club or Rotary Club type thing, and they used to have their public functions in the third floor. That was like a wide-open kind of a hall feel. Somebody, some point in time converted it to an apartment. We bought the building in 2013 and kept it as a single unit, single apartment building.
We're looking at pictures of it right now. Pretty nice, yeah.
It's huge. Yeah, we, we put real money in it, and we're excited about it, and we think it came out really super cool. Two apartments, a smaller studio and one very large, equally large apartment, not equally, probably 2,400 square feet.
I just gotta remind the board members to turn your mics on with questions, okay? Anything else you got?
No.
Okay.
Typical conditions, lockbox, noise permit. How's, Joe, who's gonna be managing the short-term rental? Is it a company?
A woman named Tanya Fitzgerald. I don't know if you know her.
Okay.
She manages 43 units. She has a team of five.
All right.
She's on it from booking to restocking to laundry to everything.
Can you just provide our office with her contact information?
Sure.
That would be great. Thank you.
Of course.
Yeah, there may be an Knox box on that building now. I don't know, but.
There is an Knox box.
Okay, so that's good.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And refuse, how do you handle, how is refuse and all that handled? Trash and?
So at the bottom of the stairs of the, you know, second and third floor is a little tiny utility closet, which has recycle and trash tote. They're taken out, but that's, it's only three residential tenants in the building, so that they're stored, they're temporarily brought out and then brought back in. And then People's Inc. is the commercial tenant on the first floor. They have their own totes.
Okay. And it's private hauler or city pickup?
City.
City pickup? Okay. You will need to.
Set a term?
The term and the parking. Parking really does not change.
Yeah.
Unit, one apartment, so it does not change.
All right.
So it's pre-existing.
So do we need to vote on waiving that, or? Okay.
No change.
Good. Everything else good? Okay, so a term for the special permit will need to be discussed. Usually, first, this looks immaculate, the first, first year, the first time somebody asks for a special permit, we give them a one-year term, so that typically, and I think, were you inclined to do that for this?
I personally would extend it out a little bit. I mean, this applicant's been before the board before for numerous properties. They're always kept in good condition, and it was a one-bedroom apartment already, and this building came before the planning board for all the work on the first floor, and we've had no issues.
Thank you. You wanna set no term then, or limit, or? Is that over here?
I mean, it's been a one-bedroom, it's going to Airbnb. I mean, I don't see any, any new intensity with garbage or refuse or anything like that.
Just with the, with short-term rentals, the activity can change week to week, month to month. That's the only reason I would suggest maybe just to, just for the initial term, to be a shorter term of the year, to see how it goes, and at that point, then I would extend it. I mean, that's my only concern, is that sometimes, you know, you don't know, the tendencies are not stable, they're not constant, long-term tendencies, and so you can have a situation that can get out of, be out of control, or it can be managed appropriately, so that, that would be my only thought there.
Yeah, I just also, I mean, I, that's always been the board's purview, I just, you know, looking at the applicant that has been before the board before and has a history in the city.
Speak into the mic, please. Thank you.
Are we going with no term, or do you wanna set a term?
I think there should be a term, but.
Okay. Any discussion on the term? Do a year and then rework it? Okay. Okay. Sounds like one term, one year is the initial term, then. Anything else? Any questions from the board? Okay. Under seeker? Where are we here? Is it? Okay. Where are my notes on that? Yeah, under seeker, it's a type-two action, so no further review of the board is required. At this time, I will make a motion that we approve item number four for a period of one year with Board Policy 6. Anything else?
19, and submit the management contact information form to the City Planning Office, and that if there is a change of, change of ownership, that will return back.
Okay.
I get this emailed to me? These minutes are the to-do list?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, that's a motion. Do I have a second? Second by Matt Gillis. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all very, very much.
All right. Okay. Item number five, 241-267 Rear Albany Avenue, special permit renewal to construct and operate a community solar project. Section block and lot is 48.317-1-2, secret determination, zone triple R, Ward 2, Radio Kingston is the applicant owner. Are there anybody, is there anybody besides the applicant owner wishing to speak on item number five? Nobody there. Okay, welcome, fellas. Can you state your names for the record, please?
Scott Dutton, 19 Canfield Street, architect.
Jimmy Buff, executive director of Radio Kingston.
Right. Okay, so this is down by the KNY antenna, right? This is down in the lowlands. Any changes with what's going on there?
The solar field is producing electricity, and we use it for backup power for the transmitter in case of emergencies, and we're also giving electricity to about a dozen off-takers, nonprofits in Midtown Kingston.
Okay. Good. I know there's a lot of pictures here, so I just gotta make sure. All right, the, the original approval was in February 2020 for a period of one year. The most recent renewal was in March 2022 for one year. Are we bound by one year on this?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. In perpetuity again? Just let it go? I'm gonna have a no term on this, or what?
There is no, there's unlimited.
I'm good with that. How's everybody with that, unlimited term? Unless things change, you know, ownership, whatever? Yeah. Okay. That's easy. Anything else?
Term would expire with change of operation, ownership, equipment. Okay.
All right. So this is an unlisted action. Do we need to? Okay.
No, type-two.
Oh. Okay. Scratch that out. Okay, under seeker, this is a type-two, so no further review of the board is required. All right, so at this time, I'll make a motion that we approve item number five. Second by Robert Jacobson, with all original conditions carried forward.
And the term now would expire with any change in equipment, operation, expansion, ownership, lease changes, et cetera.
Okay. So there's a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. You're staying, right? Okay. Okay. Item number six, 693 Broadway and Perrin's 695, special permit renewal slash amendment to the approved site plan to include demolition of the garage building. Section block and lot is 56.92-3-19.100, secret determinations, Ward 4, Zone C2, Broadway Overlay District, Heritage Area, Radio Kingston is the applicant owner. Anybody besides Radio Kingston wishing to speak at this time? Okay. Welcome, Jimmy Buff and Scott Dutton here again. So things have changed, you're gonna remove, you're gonna demolish a building?
Yeah, we're gonna create an open space on the corner with a lot of trees, shade, grass. Actually, I think we'll probably be referencing a little bit from the Prince and Grand Street design, maybe some chess tables, and so we're hoping to have a plan before you guys, maybe even next month.
Heritage has already signed off on.
Okay.
Demolition of the building.
Building on the, the old garage on the corner?
Yes.
Two-bay garage?
Yeah.
Landscape lighting plan?
Got a drawl on it?
Yes.
All right, so the only real issue is landscaping and lighting details, and in the past, staff has handled those issues prior. Is that, everybody comfortable with that again? Okay. And I think you guys are comfortable with that as well. Good.
Yes.
Any, anything else, Sue? Any further questions from the board? All right. Under seeker, it's a type-two action. Again, no further review of the board is required. At this time, I'll make a motion that we approve item number six with Board Policy 6.
19.
And 19. And staff will be handling the landscape and lighting details. That is a motion. Do I have a second? Yes.
The term for special permit renewal?
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Make it longer, if you'd like.
What was the last one?
Is it gonna be maintained as a separate property?
No, it's all combined.
Yeah. Combined in with the radio station?
Yep.
Does that have a special permit on it?
All one permit.
Correct, but this renewal, it, what's?
Yes, it would cover that, it would cover that use.
When's the other one come due?
This is a renewal.
The whole project? So they're due for the whole project now?
Yeah.
What was that original term?
Three?
Okay. All right, so how's everybody feel about a three-year term? The last was one. Good?
Yes.
Yeah. Good with that?
They do a lot of work there, so they'll probably be back before then anyways.
If it's not done in three years, I won't be sitting here.
Well, two of the buildings are, are done. The third building should be done here in the next couple of months, and then it's just landscaping from there on out, so.
All right, three years, sounds good, right? All right, so again, this was type-two, so no further review of the board is required. And my motion will now include the addition of the three-year term for the special permit. All right? Do I have a second on that? Second by Matt Gillis. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. All right, thank you, folks. All right, moving into old business. Item number seven is 106 West Chestnut Street. It's a special permit renewal to operate a boarding house. Section block and lot is 56.34-11-22, secret determination, zone R1, it's in Heritage Area, coastal zone, Ward 9, Chestnut Hill, New York Incorporated is the applicant owner. All right. Well, we can go on and just, we're gonna want to just table for now.
I would just do it. I mean, he was told 6:30. Let's just do it. I mean, I don't know.
Okay. Yeah. All right. The applicant is not here, and we do have some things to discuss. We are awaiting some items to be answered before we can make a determination, one of them being the engineer's structural report on the, is that on the fire escape, on the fire escape?
Right. The, the board had last month listened to the public comment. You also had the inspection report of the Building Safety Division that was dated for 12 of 2023, that we got the actual written report that included certain items. The fire escape repairs needed a follow-up inspection by an engineer. The fire alarm system had to be tested and inspected by a qualified alarm system company, and that report submitted to Building Safety. There was a bedroom in the basement that could not be used, had, did not have approval for, and there was a bed that had to be removed from the rear cartage in one of the bedrooms. The follow-up inspection was scheduled for April 11. The follow-up inspection was scheduled for April 26th. Building Safety did an inspection today, earlier. I got an email from the Building Safety Division. All of the items are not completed. So at this time, it's our recommendation that no determination on this application be made this evening until all of the issues are fully addressed to the satisfaction of the city.
I'm good with that. Just have one question about the, the fire alarm system. That's been installed for quite a long time. It just has never been in operation, is that correct? Is that?
It's not functional.
All right. Anybody have any comments, questions? What's that? No, you can't. Not at this time, Leo. Okay, sorry, I thought it was Leo. I tried to have eyes on the back of my head. Yeah. All right. All right, so at this time, I'll make a motion that we table item number seven until we have sufficient reports and inspections before this board to make a determination.
I would just, there's no other comments from board members? No other questions that you want us to follow up with the applicant on, correct?
The only other one that I would is just the management of this. It's, is there full time on site? What's the levels? Because you look at the number of police complaints and all of the issues there. It doesn't seem like there's adequate supervision.
Okay, so there's one person on site, which he stated last month. And there is no requirement in the code in terms of how many management positions need to be in place for any number of people. If you feel that it's not sufficient, so you're feeling that that one person is not sufficient management to, okay.
To manage that number of people in the building.
Okay.
And is this getting tabled until the city gets the reports that it needs rather than, we're not waiting on the owner to address issues? We're waiting until?
Well, there are both. There's, there's the fire alarm system that needs to be taken care of, right? That's, that's, and, well, it's all really the owner's issues, right? We've got the engineering report that needs to be done and to get a favorable inspection report from Building Safety, they need all of those items, in addition to some other items, taken care of, right?
I would say that the, well, the engineer, the engineer for the fire escape is scheduled to be there on the 25th of April, okay, which is before our next meeting. And that there was a discussion from Building Safety that the fire alarm system either has to be restored to full working order or it needs to be removed and/or covered over. But I believe that, I don't know what a timetable for that is. So that's a question that I would ask, is that, what is the timetable for that work to be done? So it has, I'll read you what Steve Knox wrote. "The code requires that non-required systems," which this is, "be maintained but may also be removed or have no visible signs of the installed system. The pull stations and strobes will temporarily be covered until Fisher Alarm restores the system to full working order." It's not a required, according to Steve, no.
Yeah, I made a motion to table and second by Robert Jacobson. All in favor? Aye, opposed? Carried.
He just walked in. Well, do you want to bring him up and just explain that you tabled it?
Good. All right, let the record show that Mr. Sangi is here now for 106 West Chestnut Street. We were awaiting your arrival and there are, just to let you know, there are still some issues that need to be taken care of that we can't make a decision tonight on whether to renew or not. We have the engineer's report on the fire escape. The, you know, we had, you gotta turn your mic on too. The fire alarm system needs to be covered over. I know that you've got that scheduled to be done too, right? You've got that. And Steinmeier, Mr. Steinmeier's supposed to do an inspection on the? Yeah.
No, it's in the process of being turned on.
Do you have a timeframe?
I'm sorry?
Do you have a timeframe for that?
Not at the moment.
Okay, can you get one for us? Can you ask Fisher, submit something that, I'm assuming you're going with Fisher Alarm, right? That's what Steve Knox told us. Okay, so if he can provide the board with a statement as to when it will be fully operational or that would be great.
This is something that's not required.
I know, but if it's, if it's installed and there are elements, like we got a pull station over here, right?
Who are you, who is this? This is just my biggest concern with your property. Is this fire? Well, identify yourself. How rude, how rude of you.
Joe, he's the Assistant Corporation Counsel, okay? There's, there are some issues that need to be taken care of and we voted to table until the, till next month so you can address those issues. You'll get a laundry list of items, you know, from planning that need to be addressed and then you can show up next month and hopefully so those things will be addressed, okay? But this is, this is Matt Janikowski. He's our Assistant Corporation Counsel, okay? I didn't think he was raising his voice, but let's, that's his job here. He's, he provides us with counsel for our, our operation here, so that's what he does, okay? Yeah, all right. But we voted to table, so our business with you tonight is concluded, all right? And we'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, moving on and old business. Item number eight is 9 Prince Street. Site plan to construct an additional, Andrew, you wanna shut that door? Please. Okay, 9 Prince Street. Site plan to construct eight additional units on a multifamily property. Section block and lot is 56.26-6-11. Seeker determination, Zone O2, Ward five. CPG Kingston One LLC, okay, is the applicant owner. Welcome. Can you state your name for the record, please?
Courtney Green.
All right, so where are we here, Sue, with this? This process?
Well, we have the county comments to address if you want to start with those.
We have last month we went through a lot of the issues, but we had to table it to wait at the, not last month.
For the county?
Okay.
So we have the rec fee to finalize tonight.
Okay.
You need to look at the county comments. We still do not have the final sign-off from our city engineer, but we feel that that could be a condition of final approval if the board would agree. And we checked with the Building Safety Division about the access to the roof being through one of the units and there is no code, no reason in the code to deny that, so that's not an issue, which means that they don't have to put any outside or exterior structure on the building, so that's good for them. I think you've seen all of the visuals. You've seen the site plan. You've seen the landscaping drawings, the lighting plans. We have, we don't have any further questions as far as those aspects of the site plan are concerned. So if you want to start with the county, in your notes, you have the?
We're gonna, we gotta go into the, into these. Yeah.
Flip over one page and then, you got one more?
Yeah. Okay. All right, there were three comments, Sue? Three comments from the, that were advisory from the county? Okay.
Advisory only.
Yeah. All right, so the first one is affordable housing. And you have a response to that, I see. "This development will be the third of three buildings on this single parcel. Two existing structures have already been renovated for a total of six existing in eight planned units. The requisite affordable housing unit has already been cited in one of the two already renovated buildings, which is why it is not reflected in the plan, so this new structure shows that's been taken care of." That's, uh... Sustainability measures. And you're, the applicant would be using heat pumps and LED lighting. They also recommended EV charging stations or the infrastructure to support their development. They said that should, it should be incorporated into the plan. And the applicant's response is, "Site of future EV charging stations are shown on drawing A-101.1. Future roof solar is shown on drawing A-110.01." So that has been addressed. And again, these are only advisory. Bicycle storage, placement of a single bicycle rack is recommended for inclusion. It should be noted on the site plan and you have indicated that it is included on drawing A-102.101. So that has been addressed. All right, as far as the engineer's review, it has to do with stormwater, does it?
It's with regards to the stormwater. They also reviewed the site plans and we've passed on the comments back to the applicant. There were some questions with some of the retaining wall structure and some other calculations were questioned, so there was an outflow question. There was a question on the actual stormwater device itself that's going to be the storage system underground and the levels. So those, I think, are really technical questions that our engineers.
They're working on it, they just couldn't turn it around for today.
That we can, we can address.
On staff level?
There was another site question that we had discussed internally and I don't think it made it into the notes. On the Fox Hall side, there's the fencing on the street. Is there a way to maybe keep the fencing out of, you know, off of the street and just kind of make, because the building is really an attractive building and, and I think when we saw the visuals in the streetscape itself, you know, trying to keep that maybe less of a solid fence, maybe make it more like a split rail or something that just allows it to look a little bit more, you know?
The, the only reason, we took, it used to be fully fenced. We took out a bunch to make those like front entry areas.
Right.
That's the sort of area where it's tough because if a tenant has a pet or something in the front units, I wanted them to have a fenced in area because it's just a lot easier to have something enclosed where you can put some chairs and this and that and have a little privacy. So we sort of tried to split the difference there by creating those viewpoints where, you know, there's a gate and you can see right into the front entryways while still keeping something there to, to give those tenants some feeling of having their own little yard area. Maybe we can work within, you know, the types of fence to have it be more porous or, you know, with more slats in it that you can see through better.
Pictures up behind you, that's why I'm looking kind of behind.
The fencing underneath the balconies there?
Yeah, I mean, maybe then with some added, more, more added landscaping or something, just to kind of break it up from being a solid, you know, fencing type unit. I keep the, you know, make it more, have more of a streetscape, street presence is what I'm thinking.
Yeah, I'm sure we can come up with something that does that. You know, it's always that line between tenant privacy and the streetscape and, you know, from my perspective, I care more about the tenants, but from your perspective, you care more about the streetscape, so trying to meet in the middle here.
Yeah, that will be, I'm just writing that down now too. That discussions on landscaping around the fencing area will be handled on staff level.
Personally, I don't have any issue with the fence. I think a little bit of landscaping in front of the fence would soften the fence.
You put some, some shrubs in front of them, some pretty flowers and... We could come up with a landscaping plan too.
And that's something you can discuss at staff level. Yeah. So the engineer's report or, yeah, report that you're, we're waiting for, is that something that you're comfortable could be handled on staff level as well?
I mean, they, they've issued, they've issued a report in their comments and we've given them to the applicant, so the applicant is preparing the responses. So I would say that if the engineer signs off and is satisfied with the responses, then we're good to go.
Everybody's good with that? Staff level for that? That way you don't have to go back for another meeting, you know, we'll just have that handled as well, so.
So they should just submit their responses to your office and then we can just go back and forth?
Yeah, we'll act as conduit.
And the recreation fee? Where are the, where are my notes, is the, okay, I see it. Have we received a formal opinion from them? Do they, they weigh in or no? The Recreation Commission? Do we wait for that or are we just gonna assess one?
They did, they didn't get it into the notes.
Okay.
They looked at it. I think they went with the full fee.
Okay, so Recreation went with a fee of $3,000 per unit for a total of $24,000. That's for eight additional units. Everybody's good with that? Okay. And these are things you're all familiar with, so, yeah. And those were the only issues that we had outstanding? All right, anybody have any other questions? Okay. We need a knox box on this, please. And you can discuss that with our staff level too, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Staff is recommending a performance bond be done with, because of the stormwater chambers and make sure they're all put in properly? Is that good with that? Okay. And that's, the performance bond is something you can discuss at staff level as well, so. And will John come up with something for that?
There, we'll work with Larry Padge to get the cost estimates together with John.
All right. All right, any, anything else? Okay, looking forward to this thing being built, you know?
Unlisted action.
Me too.
Okay. Okay, so under seeker, this is an unlisted action. I have before me a short environmental assessment form that plan has, yeah, plan, that staff has indicated is in order. At this time, we'll make a motion that we approve it. Do I have a second? Second by Matt Gillis. All in favor? Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Yes.
Robert Jacobson? Matt Gillis? Vince Archer? Okay, that is approved. I'll sign this in a bit, okay? I didn't sign it, okay. So at this time, I will make a motion that we approve item number eight with the following condit-, Sue's gonna go over the condition. with the following condit-, Sue's going to go over the conditions of attached to this approval. All right. So you go, you wanna, yeah, I said that, we have a motion.
Okay.
And a second. Matt Gillis, a second, and we're going to go over the, the conditions.
I have that the board concurs with all of the Ulster County Planning Board advisory comments and agrees with the responses from the applicant, that they are sufficient to cover those concerns. That city engineer will have a final sign off on the stormwater report and all of the other site elements that he has raised comment on. A recreation fee of $24,000 will be remitted. Landscaping will be added in front of the fence along Fox Hall and that will be reviewed with staff. A performance bond will be submitted and reviewed and approved by staff as well. The board policies are 2, 4, 4A, 6, 7, 7A, 12, 14, 18, 18A, 19, 22, 23, 25, and 26. That's it.
Yeah, that might have a knox box on it already up there. Yeah. Yeah. Well, they can have a central box and then go over the keys for that. Yeah, yeah, an appropriately sized box. Okay, so that's a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye, opposed, carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, item number nine is 25 Diedrich Street. Site plan to renovate an existing building for use as a photography museum, offices, educational center, and commercial arts activities. Section block and lot is 56.25-4-36.100. Seeker determination, Zone C3, mixed-use overlay district, Board 5. Center for Photography at Woodstock is the applicant owner. Welcome. I know Scott Dutton's here. Can you introduce yourself, please?
Hi there, I'm Nadine Lemon. I'm a board member of CPW.
Okay, welcome.
If anyone wants paper, I have some. I know you have all the digital. The two packets there? Yep.
All right, fire away, please.
Well, naturally, we've been working closely with staff to get this ready for you for tonight. Did receive the county comments, but I'm going to hand it over to Nadine to give the board a brief description of the, the use.
Hi.
Hi.
I've been very impressed with the process here.
Yeah, bring that mic in close, too. Just pull it right into you, yeah.
Bring it in.
Bring it all the way in.
We moved into town about, I don't even know how long ago, we, a year ago almost now. And we just purchased this building in February and we're very excited about it. It's got 40,000 square feet and we're hoping to turn the bottom two floors as a first phase into exhibition space, educational space. We have a digital media lab that would go in there. We have lectures that have it happen every week. So we've been working with Scott Dutton. He's walked us through the process. We have received some, some state grants to help us along the way.
Okay.
And the city has supported, they're a supporter of your?
Yes, actually, the City of Kingston put forward the Restore New York grant for us. They're only allowed to put one grant forward for that Restore New York program, so we were very happy that they put us forward. And we got it. Shock.
And are different things going to be happening on different floors? What's the, what's the?
Yeah, if you, you think about any arts and cultural institution, museums usually have ancillary functions. You know, in addition to just gallery space, there are classrooms, workshop spaces, as Nadine said, you know, the coffee shop and all of that. So I think this is exciting for Kingston to have something this significant right in midtown.
You know, and with more of these older buildings, you know, being repurposed, it's, it's, I mean, you've done your, your share of it. It's, it is a welcome, welcome sight when these things happen, you know, so we applaud you for that, yeah.
Great, we love the building.
You got a good fellow here to help out along the way with that.
That's astounding.
Yeah.
So you have in your packet revised site plan, which is not that different than it is today. Probably the most significant thing is that we're proposing a connection to the adjoining property. We have full support and enthusiasm from, from the neighbor. I'll follow up with staff for the appropriate easement language to be reviewed there. But a freshen up across the entire site. Exterior improvements will be new windows. There's a proposed lighting plan in here that complies with the city code. Some landscaping. And, but the bulk of the, the capital improvements will take place on the, the interior. I can address the county comments. That, yes, we're aware of the stretch code for sure. And shame on me for forgetting to put the EV charging space, spaces in there. But those will exist in the parking lot close to the building, I would say.
Scott, the lot is currently paved, but your plans show gravel.
Yes. And the reason.
See the reverse?
Right. The reason for that is that CPW hopes to do a ground source geothermal system there. So that will mean that we'll be punching holes every 25 feet on center in that parking lot. And we don't know yet until certain grants come in whether they'll have funds to do that in Phase One. Or that gets kicked to Phase Two. So in the event that it gets kicked to Phase Two, they won't have the resources to, to drill the wells and to resurface the lot. So it's kind of a, a safety mechanism. If they end up getting some additional funds prior to us getting a C of O, then naturally we would come back because we will want the, the lot paved ultimately. But that's a, it was a strategic decision to get them up and get a C of O at the earliest possible date.
One of the county comments also talked about the elevator.
Yep.
I just want to talk about that a little bit.
Sure. I guess Rob missed that there is a, an accessible route that's shown on the northeast side of the building that will get you to the main level, which does have elevator access to the upper floors. So in Phase One, they will be fully accessible.
Thank you.
Okay. So that addresses that one. Okay. I turned you off, by the way, too. Okay. So they're addressing that as well. All right. So the county comments have been addressed. Okay.
I want to just talk a little bit about the cross easements. We had talked about them at staff level with you. And I know that you are also an adjoining property owner, but you also mentioned with the adjacent physical physicians?
Yes, the Mottskins who own the property on Grant Street with the medical office tenants in it are very enthusiastic about us opening up a connection between the, the two lots. It's a win-win for both of the properties. It's something Nadine could speak about from her prior experience in the town of Gardner. But the notion is that since their uses, their peak uses happen at opposing times, that there's an opportunity if there needs to be overflow during the day at the medical office building, which I have to say, to date, they have never needed, but who knows in, in the future, that they could avail themselves of the additional parking spaces in CPW's lot. Conversely, when there's an opening and you have a, a peak event where there might be 100 people, that they can park in the medical office building and have a clear line of access to the CPW building. When I purchased our building and the former owners, NNS Supply, purchased this property back in the year 2000, we created a series of reciprocal cross easements so that tractor trailers could come down Diedrich Street, go through the 25 Diedrich Street lot, out through my parking lot to get back out to Diedrich. And then there are some other easements that are all baked in there.
Were these all handshake agreements?
No, these are, we, we, myself, NNS Supply, and Sunshine Tees all shared the cost of the survey work. And Bernier and Larios did all of that work. Bernier and Larios is doing the work for CPW. So we'll have Mike Moriello create a new easement with, with the Mottskins. But this is just a continuation of Good Neighbor policy and getting it documented on file so that, so the traffic movements benefit everyone. You know, the UPS drivers, the FedEx drivers, to make things run as smoothly as possible.
Good.
Do you want to just talk about signage a little bit? Just go over what the signage plan is? And we do know that there's a, there's a sign painted on the side of the building now. It's like a historic type sign. We want to obviously preserve that. I know that you're putting a monument sign in. I don't know if there's any other signage other than maybe some circulation, maybe a directory sign, which might be inside the building itself.
At this point, we haven't spent any time talking about signage other than identifying the obvious place for the monument sign. So if there's anything that comes up in the next couple of months, I'd say more than happy to come back. Would naturally come meet with you first, but we don't, we don't have a branding.
Right.
Sign in place.
I would like to ask the board maybe to allow staff to review the signage, if, the monument sign. Any other signs we can bring back?
We, we are in the process of possibly changing our name from Center of Photography at Woodstock to something else. Kingston-related perhaps. So that might be some of the delay with coming up with the actual signage. I'm, maybe I should have asked this beforehand. We have with our other building put up kind of temporary banner signage so that people can see what exhibitions are happening. Is that something that we put on the table now or we come back to you later?
That's normal and customary for museums. I think we should present, put a package together, present it to Sue. And Kyla, if they're comfortable, then they have the, the board's approval at staff level. If they feel that the board should review it, then we'll just come back for another meeting. But I don't, I don't think we have enough information yet to.
Okay.
We did have a comment on the landscape plan. There's a call to use some maples, I believe. We are right now discouraging, the tree commission is discouraging the maples due to overpopulation as far as our, our inventory showed. So we'd like to maybe look at some other species with you to suggest some other types of.
Yeah, we're totally open. We don't, we don't have a landscape advocate on our board, so if someone wants to give us good guidance, we're welcome to.
Okay. Board questions? Comments?
With the stormwater.
I can speak to that. I can speak to that.
You're going with a, we go with gravel first, right? And then, so with, yeah, let's, let's, yes. How are you going to manage that?
So Dennis Larios, as I said, will be the civil on this. We're really close to being a reduction in impervious. So he will provide the technical information, whether it means a small infiltrator or a couple of drywells. But he said it's not going to be much because the pre and post are so negligible. And he, you know, they're swamped right now. But I would say that I would request that we submit that to staff and engineering. And again, if they feel that it needs to come back to the board, then naturally we, we will.
We've been throwing stuff back to staff tonight with stormwater and engineering things anyway tonight. That's one of the things that they can handle. So everybody's comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can tell you from firsthand experience, living right next door, it's nothing but pure mason sand for 60 feet. And even in the peak torrential events, 15 minutes later, with a couple of drywells, it's gone. So we're not concerned about being able to address it.
One last comment from me and then I'll, I'll kind of be quiet. But the building is obviously an older industrial type building. It's a very common type building in Kingston, attractive. Any thoughts if you want to share with the board about the historic preservation? If you're going to be looking at that potentially down the road, either to get the property listed. It certainly has eligibility, I think. And, you know, I don't know what your plans are, so maybe you can just talk about that.
I can take it a little bit. I've been in contact with SHPO as part of this Restore New York. We do have to get sign off from the State Historic Preservation Office. We did, in the beginning, pursue the possibility of historic tax credits. But because we wanted to move into it and do it in a phased manner, this renovation, it was not legally feasible to go down that road. But yes, I just did contact Terrell about the possibility of getting it listed because there is another nice state grant that I'd like to chase that requires it. So it's on our list.
So we have a letter from SHPO indicating, confirming that it is eligible.
And I can send that to you, that it's both eligible and there's no impact for what we're doing.
Right.
Yeah. So any renovations you're going to be doing in the initial stages here are not going to, you're going to be cognizant about?
Absolutely.
Not disturbing any details that might affect?
Right, the eligibility.
Replacing them?
Robert, I need you to speak up into.
I just asked about windows, but what, are we just replacing first and second floor or?
All of them.
First phase?
If we get the grant, we find out in a couple of weeks. If we get a grant, we, we do have an awful lot of fundraising that we need to do. I mean, we're a small organization and we have just caught a very big building. So I can't promise you it's going to happen right away that the windows get changed or that these changes move quickly, but we're going to make an attempt. The grant that we've applied for is with the New York State Council for the Arts and they would pay for half of, of it. So we have an estimate of $1.3 million to replace all windows.
We prepared a preliminary bid package, what, four months ago maybe, and went out to a couple of contractors to get quotes, worked with Harbrook up in Albany that I work with frequently to put a real window package together so that we have a sense of what the, the costs are. But roughly three quarters of a million dollars.
So with this first phase or, I mean, I guess the question is, are we doing it all or nothing? Are we doing like first, second floor and not the third? Like, I don't want to end up with a building that's mixed match.
If we get this grant, it, it pays for, it's for all of the windows. So there's 188 windows and maybe a door or two.
If we don't get the grant, what are we doing with the first and second floor?
We're not going to do the windows until we apply the next year for the next year grant. New York State Council of the Arts has a good pot of money for capital improvements for museums.
And I guess as a board member, my just, my biggest concern is like, I kind of want to see all or nothing. I don't want to see partial.
Okay, noted.
How the other board members feel about that, but it's, it's kind of, like, I'm okay with putting it into Phase Two, but I'm just, I don't want to end up seeing a building that looks new on the bottom and looks old on the top.
No, that makes sense, you know?
For us, too, to do it all at once.
Yeah, I just, I just, you know, that's my only concern is the long-term effect. If, if, second floor. If second floor get done and we never get to the rest.
Fair enough.
Sidewalks, you got, I mean, I don't even know what, is there blacktop there now? Is that what it is?
There is sidewalks. It's missing one bit, I noticed, between, if you come out of the parking lot to the left going towards the medical building, it's missing a little bit there.
What's it look like along Canfield Street too there? That's, that's, that's another property over there.
There are some photographs in that, that package you can see.
No sidewalk, it's all curb.
No.
It's too narrow, I think, for sidewalks.
It is too narrow.
Yeah, I'm looking at this visual right here. Is it really?
It's in, it's interesting. Canfield Street actually could be wider if you, if you look at the survey map. The property line for Sunshine Tees is basically the building line. So, but there is a grass strip and a curb between Sunshine Tees and where the, where Canfield Street starts. So as long as I've been there, which is since 23 years, you have parallel parking facing south, if you will, in Canfield Street. And it just kind of works, even though it's not a full two-lane width, because you have on the other side of Sunshine Tees, our drive lane.
Yeah.
And it's...
So there's, I mean, there's probably not even a need for a sidewalk on that.
No.
No. What's, what's it look like in front of the building? Man, I'm looking here.
It's got a full sidewalk.
Okay.
Yeah, one little section.
All right. Is all the ivy coming down too?
We've had one architect say yes and one architect say no, and we haven't really tackled that. I think nostalgically, we like the ivy, but we understand that it can have its issues.
I'm not going to ask any architects to weigh in on that right now, so. All right. Any other questions from the board? All right, so we have some items that can be taken care of on staff level, right? And we've got enough questions answered. I think we can move for an approval tonight with conditions. Does staff agree with that? Board agree with that? Okay. Okay, so let's do Seeker first. I should really have these things stapled. All right, so under Seeker, this is a type two. Is that, am I reading that correctly? Okay. So no further review is required here. We're just getting our conditions together here. All right, so at this time, I'll make a motion that we approve item number nine, and Sue's going to go over the conditions.
Recognizing that the statements and responses to the Ulster County Planning Board satisfy the comments that were made by that agency. Stormwater will be submitted to staff for review and also sign off by the city engineer. Cross easements between adjoining properties for parking, access, et cetera, will be submitted to staff for review and approval. Signage will be submitted to staff for review and approval. And the landscaping will get a final sign off with staff as well. Board policies four, four A, five, six, 12, 14, 19, 24, 25, and 26 are applied.
So that is a motion. Do I have a second on that? Second by Matt Gillis. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried.
Thank you.
Good luck. Thank you.
Very exciting.
All right, we are too. Bye-bye. Okay, item number 10 is 59 Pearl Street in Perren's 236 Wall Street. Site plan amendment to establish event space. Section block and lot is 56.91-3-1. Seeker determination, zone 02. It's an heritage area. Ward two, Kingston Ops Two LLC is the applicant owner. Scott Dutton is here representing the owner.
Yep.
All right, so this is the old...
St. Joseph's School.
Yeah. And we've been, you've been here to discuss some other, on different floors that have been presented now. We're talking about which floor now?
Yep, the lower floors were approved some time ago. We talked about the third floor in the previous approval, and the owner needed to develop a management plan. We submitted that to staff. Went back and forth on that a little bit, and I think that that's been addressed.
And this was the gymnasium part, right? This was the old gymnasium?
Yes.
Okay.
And they did plays and performances there, and it's absolutely gorgeous. I mean, it's a room not as opulent as this, but very high ceilings, huge tin crown molding, intact.
And any parking associated with this is going to be handled at the Lucas Avenue site? That's, that's the plan?
There are just a handful of spots on, on this property.
Yeah.
But 16 Lucas will be the repository.
And that's been working well system-wide for, so far, it's good?
So far. I mean, there, you can drive by there, there are always tons of spaces available. They're just, the tenants in that building don't really use that much of the lot.
I think what Wayne was asking Scott is how it's working with the boutique hotels right now, because they're, they're utilizing it with valet parking.
Right. I haven't heard any complaints, and I'm actively...
I haven't either, so I'm just...
Charles Blakeman and I rarely go a day without talking to one another. And when something comes up, he calls me and says, we need to address it. But in addition to 16 Lucas, he rents other lots around, and it seems to be working.
Okay.
I think the, the need for 16 Lucas is really going to come into play when you have a wedding or bar mitzvahs, and you have a peak number of people that are there for three hours.
Yeah.
That's when they'll need to...
What's the maximum occupancy of that space?
Good question. And it depends on the type of, of seating arrangement. For tables and chairs, you use 15 square feet per person. The floor plate is 5,200 square feet, then you take out all the other stuff. You've got about 3,000 square feet there. So divide that by 15, and that's your theoretical occupant load. But it's a couple hundred people.
Okay.
And that code number of 15 square feet per person, as Wayne will remember from his days in the fire department, if you pack people in at 15 square feet per person, they're not very happy. So it's more like 25 to 30 people.
Because, I mean, this, I just, I was just thinking, it says the maximum occupancy is 500, but that's for unseated event. So that would be...
Right. Take a room like this, and let's say there was a wedding there. Maybe two-thirds of the room might be for tables and chairs, and then we have to calculate the area where there might be dancing at seven square feet per person. So...
Right.
Sort of a juggling act there.
Seems like a lot of people.
I can't imagine there ever being an event with that many people at it. You know, it's a, it's a room that's pretty comparable to, to the room we're in right now.
Yeah.
And I think when you get to, you know, about 200 people, you're probably as packed in as you would want to be for a fee-for-service event, you know?
Are you doing anything internally for noise mitigation, just to like, you know, just if you get that many people in a room, it's...
Absolutely. We have an acoustician, Kevin Attachi, an acoustical engineer, that we've worked with on a number of projects to make sure that there's comfort inside, but also that we don't violate the city's noise ordinance and start getting complaints off property. So yes, we are addressing acoustics.
Okay.
And the applicant is aware that the city has a noise ordinance, and there are certain hours and decibel ratings that have to fall within.
Right now, we don't see any like kitchen or any other type of additional facilities being added in this space. Is that something down the road, or just you're going to be, it'll be catered out if they do have food?
Charles is interested in having a small warming kitchen in there, but we haven't, we don't have a fully baked plan for an independent standalone health department-approved kitchen. You know, he has the kitchen at the Kinsley. But when you have an event, typically, food is brought in from off-site. They bring, bring it in in warming boxes, wheel it into a room, plug it in. You've got a sink, place to break things down and do final finishing. So that will be a part of the plan, it just hasn't been located in the...
Right.
In the, the building yet.
I know that the HAC and HLPC just recently reviewed this and authorized the installation of multiple exterior condensing units, mini, for the mini splits. Any other HVAC upgrades that you foresee?
That'll take care of that.
Okay.
And it, we recognize that if there was ever a hood to be installed, that we would have to come back to one of those agencies for that, or have what we have in a project up in Boyceville, which is a fully internal ancil system with a recirc. I mean, they're very expensive, but we, we have done them before so that you don't have anything, any appurtenances on the exterior.
Yep.
They run about twice the...
That's a bread alone?
Yeah, a bread alone, we, we needed to do one of those. And that's so that we didn't, to other uses on the roof.
They've already incorporated stuff into their management plan. That's good.
Board have any questions for Scott?
Good. All right.
This is going to be managed by Kingsley Hotel Management, so it'll all be within that umbrella?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's meant to, obviously to support the hotel. You can book more rooms and get your occupancy rate up if you have this type of amenity to, to offer. But it's not exclusive to the hotel, but it's be managed by the same group.
Good. All right. Under Seeker, this is an unlisted action. Reading that right?
You might be too, type two, we're doing, the size of it and historic building, we're doing historic tax credits.
So two, type two?
I believe.
Okay, so no further review of the board is required. This time, I'll make a motion that we approve item number 10. And she's working again on... With the following conditions.
Okay, board policies six, 12, 19, 23, 25, and 26, that the board approves the management plan as outlined in your staff notes. Unless, I don't, I didn't hear any questions on that. And then...
I did make mention of it, though, in here.
And, and the parking is also mentioned in there, but that it is at 16 Lucas.
Okay, that is a motion. Do I have a second? Charles Palaco with a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. Great. Thank you, Scott.
See you next month.
Okay. All right, item number 11?
A passover.
Okay. Number 12?
Yeah, 11 and 12. We'll go to number 13. They are here.
11 and 12, are they coming tonight?
They said in...
Okay. All right. New business, item number 13, 18 West Union Street, has a site plan to construct a residential addition, add second story, and to create a second residential unit in the basement. Section block and lot is 56.43-3-19.100. Seeker, type two. Ward eight, zone RT. It's an heritage area. It's also in the Roundout Historic District Coastal Zone. And Hudson Valley Architecture LLC is the applicant. John Stewart is the owner. Welcome, fellas. Can you state your names to the record, please?
Yes, Scott Roper, architect. John Stewart, owner.
Okay. All right, so you've already gotten some approvals from Landmarks and Heritage?
Markson Heritage have already given approvals on this?
Okay, good. Tell us what you're, what it does. We've got some pictures up behind us here we're looking at too, so.
So you can see the lowest picture is what's existing right now.
Okay.
It's a one-story, one-bedroom house with an enclosed porch. We're looking to remove the porch and extend the house, basically rebuilding it, I believe, a foot deeper than the existing porch is now, and replace the roof with a new, steeper roof with a second floor. So the image above is what it will be.
Okay. That looks nice.
In the basement, we're looking to put a one-bedroom apartment.
And that's on the backside here?
That's on the backside.
Okay, there, okay.
It's a, it's a walkout basement on the backside. And we're adding additional windows down in the lower, in the basement for that apartment.
Part of the work that the property owner has already done along Post Street has been to really clear away a lot of the old scrub landscaping that had been overgrown. And he revealed an old, older stone wall and retaining wall, but that was in poor condition. So that is being rebuilt, and it's being done really very nicely. If anybody has a chance, I'd recommend going down there and taking a look at it. But it's being done in a tiered fashion. Kyla has a picture up there showing a portion of some of the work that's getting done. And it's being, it, with a concrete back and poured in place, and then it's being set in front with some bluestone. So it's really, it's nice. It offers an opportunity for some nice landscaping to be added in to soften, obviously, it's a lot of stone, but it's, but it's a high, you know, the elevation of the property from, I don't know, a Beal to the grade, what would you say? It's a good 20?
From a Beal street, maybe, yeah.
20 feet at least? Yeah.
You don't even really know it's there, I mean, looking at this picture, you know?
In a lot of the older images, yeah.
Yeah.
So what you see there, the backside, that's the backside, the red on the top is the backside of the building right now.
Okay.
And that will have a small deck off of it. Otherwise, it's going to be redone with a hardy board exterior, and a second story will get added.
And there's adequate parking for the three and a half that are required?
He's got a, yeah, he's got a small space right off of West Union. I don't think parking. Can you just talk about stormwater? Like, how... Like how you are going to be addressing the stormwater on site?
During construction or...
Yeah. How are you, well, not so much during construction, but how is it gonna be, is it gonna be collected by roof gutters and leaders? And where is it gonna be directed to? I mean, you have some landscaping in your tiered areas. Maybe some of it can be directed there to provide some...
Because it's better than I can, because I'm not a landscaper or an architect, but it struck me that quite a bit of the water will be going down those tiers.
Uh huh.
I thought, oh, it's not up there, but the side of the roof that faces a Beale, that water could be guttered off to the side in between the two properties.
Uh huh.
Brought out front in like a French drain or some underground
Right, okay.
Down the driveway, because there is a sewer on Union Street at the corner of Union and Post. So I'd like to divide the water as much as I can from the tiered.
Right. And the French drain will certainly help as well, because...
Take half the water out down to the other. That was my notion. I don't know if that's...
Okay. We're gonna wanna see the final drainage plan and how it's laid out, and wanna run that through our engineering office. Technically, you're not supposed to be putting any stormwater off of your site. With new construction, it all has to be kept onsite and handled, you know, to the best of your ability. So there's some different ways you can do it. But I think you've got plenty of open area that you can direct it to, like you're saying, with some drainage. It would be nice, I mean, to be able to, you know, use that stormwater for a positive way.
Yeah, I think a lot of that water can be used onsite.
Yeah, you know, that wall project is sort of like, it looks a little bit like something in Bavaria, some craggy thing going up. When you mentioned last time we were here about plants, I thought, well, yeah, I mean, that's this whole separate project.
Right.
And the whole landscaping of the area, except it did the lot line deletion. So it's really a big piece of property.
Yeah.
And the livability of the area around the house is like, we're gonna require its whole, you know, landscaper and plant expert person, and where the sunlight is and isn't, and all the drain, all the waterways. And this is gonna be its whole separate project, so.
What's your timeframe, time schedule on this? It's a pretty big project. I'm just curious.
Well, once we get approval, we're going to get estimates, and at that point, probably start midsummer, late summer.
Okay. Construction time period?
Should take about nine months to a year.
Nine months to a year. Okay. I don't, unless board does.
Parking, they can stack their cars in there, right? They got enough room for that.
Any questions from board members on this? Thoughts, comments?
Turn your...
You're gonna look at that wall, and the structure's coming along nice. Like you said, it's pretty, pretty high, but... I know the people across the street, they were, they built there. Jack and Tibby Weeks.
Oh, you know them.
I've visited the street quite a bit, so.
Certainly, tiering the...
Yes, nice.
The wall actually makes it less imposing at the streets.
Nice, nice job.
Well, the three walls intersect with the, there's that gigantic a Beale-facing wall.
Yes.
It was all crumbled.
Right.
Back when I bought the place, I put on all this gear and climbed into all the brush to see, okay, this is, has to be repaired. But those three walls intersect with the perpendicular wall in a way I think is really interesting.
Very nice, yeah.
Vince, you ready to vote?
All right.
Yep.
Any other questions? All right. Cylinder Seeker, this is a type-two action. No further review of the board is required. At this time, I'll make a motion that we approve item number 13 with the following conditions.
Board policy 612, 19, 25, and 26. We're just recognizing that we're approving this new construction with a second residential unit in the basement area. And then final stormwater plan and landscaping plans will be submitted to staff for review and approval.
Okay. There's a motion. Do I have a second? Second by Vince Archer. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. Thank you, gentlemen.
Or 11 and 12 here?
All right, we're gonna go back to old business right now. Item, well, they'll have both 11 and 12. Yeah. Item 11 is, and 12 are 455 Albany Avenue and 96-100 Manor Place. Item 11 is a lot line deletion of the lands of Efron Lima, section block and lot is 48.73-4-31 and 48.73-4-35.100. Secret determination, zone C3. Ward six, Efron Lima is the applicant owner. And item 12 is a site plan to construct a new 40-foot-by-52-foot metal building. Landscaping and site improvements. Section block and lot is 48.73-4-32.100 and 48.73-4-31 and 48.73-4-35.100. Secret determination on that as well. Wards, excuse me, zone C3. Ward six, Efron Lima is the applicant owner. Hi, Andrew. I know your name. Can you state your name for the record, please?
Sonia.
Okay. Nice to see you, Sonia. Okay.
We have our client, the owner, Efron Lima.
And I congratulate, just, boy, you're moving fast.
Yeah.
Well, now you've just jinxed it. That's great, you know?
I was gonna show up at nine, I didn't.
All right. All right. So let's go with the lot line deletion first. Let me do that. What do you? There you go.
So I believe that you went to the Ulster County Planning Board, and they did not have any comments in regards to the lot line deletion.
Not on the lot line, yeah.
Yeah. And so that is, in our eyes, pretty straightforward. He would like to combine parcel two and three and keep parcel one separate just because, in case he needs to separate his businesses later on.
So we will need the cross easements. Have you given any thought to those yet?
Yes. We spoke after we reviewed the letter from the planning, the Ulster County Planning Board today. We are going to include those as part of an easement. So they're going to be sharing access and also parking.
Okay. So those will have to be drafted out and submitted to our Corporation Council for review and approval as well.
Okay.
Would this be a deed detachment, or would it be on the drawings?
Or what?
The easement and the parking sharing.
Yeah. The easement and the parking. And I guess it would be maintenance as well.
Right.
You know, how that's handled.
And I was just saying, usually, it's in written part of the deed.
It would have to be, yes, you'd have to, they'd have to be referenced in the deed.
There you go.
So ultimately, whatever new deeds get filed, we'll have to recognize those.
Okay. We didn't know we needed on the drawings as well.
Parking, access, and maintenance.
Is that the only issue you got?
Yeah, but I would, I would just wait until we get to the, let's talk about site plan, because there's still some issues, so.
So are we gonna blend these in together, kind of?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
We're gonna do a little blending, okay?
Okay.
Very. So let's talk about site plan as part of this whole package here now. You got a construction of a new, new building, right? So you wanna talk about all that now for, what you got?
Yeah. So he would like to propose a 40-by-52 building where he can do repair work. He's planning on using that building for regular cars and smaller trucks. I think I sent some specifications of the type of trucks, which, you know, they're the smaller, they're the medium, that's not the huge ones. He recognizes that there is a residential zone adjacent to his properties, and he would like to respect that. And that's why he proposed to put a fence continuing the one on the adjacent lot. And there were some notes about landscaping. Now, when they take care of the property and when they clean the snow on the street, it's really hard to maintain a nice landscaping on that side because it's so close to the street. So that's something to consider. Other notes were in regards to the access and how safe he could make the site for the use that he's going to have. And the Ulster County Planning Board supported this new curb cut. And we did see a drawing that has a note regarding not curb cut on Roosevelt Avenue. But we couldn't find anything on a deed that would make it to have legal standing. So we couldn't find anything on the zoning code. I don't know if back in 1996, there was some amendment to the zoning code that, in reference to that, but couldn't find anything. The new zoning code does require a 50-foot distance from the intersection, which he has. What else? Another note from the...
Just so everybody understands what Sonia was just talking about is there was a previous subdivision that occurred on this site. And effectively, what it was, was like a land swap. And it gave a triangular piece of an adjoining residential parcel to this, to the front commercial use. And it gave a section of the commercials property to the back of that residential. So they just swapped land. The planning board, when that was approved, the planning board on that subdivision map, there was a notation made that basically carried forward any prior covenant and deed restrictions that were with the residential parcel. But it also had a note on the subdivision map that there would be no ingress or egress out to Roosevelt Avenue. So we pulled that map, gave it to Sonia. It was filed with the county. We've talked to our Corporation Council about that. And that is something I believe we need to enforce, unless there is a change with the subdivision map itself.
Subdivision map, that's the question, because there's nothing on the deeds themselves.
I realize that.
It's empty. So I don't know how it's enforceable. You gotta remember, too, it was one owner that had the whole corner, and they still live in that house. Now, they live in a house that's on a commercial zone, the adjacent to the west. So there's a question as to whether it's still as relevant. Now, the thing that's most important, more important than that, is safety. How are you gonna get out of this lot and head uptown on Albany off of the curb cuts we have without creating a huge problem? Especially with the line of cars that go right to McDonald's. So the suggestion to go to Roosevelt makes this actually a possible agenda. So you may wanna, I'm not sure where the note came from, what it was for. It was a kind of an internal little thing that was going on with the owners. It was, they were selling to themselves.
Because there is a note on the same map that it has restrictions, and it's registered, and it's for parcel 4A and parcel four.
Yeah.
And it calls it parcel four as not being commercial, and now it's shown as commercial.
Exactly. So there's a lot of complexity here.
Our question is, you know, when, does it become arbitrary? When does it have legal standing? And when does it start, and when does it stop?
Most importantly, what's the safest thing to do? Cars are leaving this property. And if you'd like them to take their chances on Albany, so be it.
Yeah.
I think it'd be a lot smarter to have a legal curb cut on Roosevelt so people who are heading left and get out.
Yeah. I mean, there's also a significant grade change there. You know, when I looked at it, I have gone by it a few times just to check it out. Between Roosevelt Avenue and where the parking, where the paved area is now, there's not a whole lot of distance. And there's a fairly substantial grade change there as well. And I have a little bit of concern with that on the, as well.
That can be managed within the property. We have a lot of distance, if you notice, in the lot line or in the plan. There's what, about...
And not only that, we have extra parking spaces that, you know, that we have for extra parking that are not required. So there is definitely a way to manage the slope. And it is not like a 25% slope. It's more like maybe...
So if this curb cut was to be utilized, if it was allowed, would cars come out of this lot? They're not gonna disappear into...
They were taking three curb cuts into Albany Avenue. And I don't know if you've seen a recent...
I'm just trying to initiate a discussion here.
That's the issue. I mean, I'll be honest with you. I live on Roosevelt Avenue, and Roosevelt Park
I know I can't say.
was part of Roosevelt Realty that had these deed restrictions. Deed restrictions are put in place to keep it residential so that commercial doesn't migrate into a residential neighborhood.
Yep.
This particular subdivision map that you're referring to was between two owners or two properties. And they, yes, they deeded a piece over, but it was on the filed map, on the county land records, giving all of the public notice, including your client when they bought, that this deed restriction is there and that there's to be no curb cut to Roosevelt Avenue. I think part of that was because years ago, when this property was gonna be redeveloped after Lamarol sold it, there was a discussion of a drugstore going on the corner. And the residents raised hell because they didn't want all the traffic going out onto Roosevelt Avenue or going into the neighborhood. This particular neighborhood's very sensitive of that because we have Bagnall Motors, which is just up the street. And they had curb cuts into the neighborhood, doing test drives through the neighborhood, and a lot of commercial traffic would pull onto the street, park, unload, and then go into the business. I can tell you, from my point of view, when you're going down Albany Avenue and you're making a right on Roosevelt Avenue, when you make that right, the cars fly right around the corner to get into Roosevelt Avenue because you're trying to get off Albany Avenue so you don't get rear-ended. You don't have a lot of distance here. And now with the new traffic lights that were installed, you have significant stacking of the cars because now on Roosevelt, you used to be able to make a right on red. You no longer can make the right on red, and you're waiting at least, primarily, what I've seen at the 8, 9 o'clock hour and the 5, 6 o'clock hour, there's about three to four changes of the lights before the Roosevelt Avenue people can go out.
So I noted that if you, I mean, you live there, and I've driven by, and the owner can attest, yeah, and the owner can attest that, you know, he's been driving in and out. So what people do is they drive into Roosevelt Avenue from Albany, going out from Keith parking, and try to maneuver their way around the neighborhood, the residential area, which is what we're trying to avoid, to find a way all the way around into Albany Avenue again. So...
This is no different than McDonald's. I mean, you know, there's certain businesses along Albany Avenue you just can't make left turns because of the traffic patterns. You have to go right and...
Right. And McDonald's does have a curb cut on the side. And I looked at Quick Check.
Their curb cut is stacked back, and so is Quick Check. They're very deep to allow stacking for the people that are at the lights.
So it is allowed. And the zoning code also has a distance, a specific distance from the intersection.
With the deed restriction.
What do you recommend? Leave the Albany three curb cuts?
That's full auto repair shop there for several. I mean, that's all it's ever been. There used to be a gas station there.
Before, there was this volume. Before, there was this volume of traffic. I've only been here 30 years, and I sit on it. I've never had to sit and wait.
Well, that's compliments to the state of New York and the new light that's there.
Yeah. And I think it's pretty unfair to say that the owner knew the restrictions because he actually didn't. because he actually didn't, and there was a huge issue with the water. There was not even registered, there was not even a key on the sidewalk, and so he didn't know. So it's, so I don't think it's fair to say that he was fully aware.
Title search would've shown you that.
Well, here's the main thing, that's what I bring before this board. What is the safest thing to do? It's all about safety, it's lives, it's cars crashing into each other. So if he has, now, this is not a high-volume business. You thought, last time I was here, you were about stacking cars. If a car goes out once in an hour, that's, you know, you've been to a mechanic shop, there's not like, it's like you have to wait. The volume is considerably slow, and I think that if you think about the safety, to be able, if you wanna go left on Albany Avenue out of Roosevelt, you gotta either take your chances with the traffic, you go for it, you gun it, you hope you make it, or you go on Roosevelt and sit. Now, it's not like, you know, there's no stacking.
Efren?
Yeah.
Does he have an opinion?
I just, I wanna ask him about, like, traffic kind of flow, like what numbers he-
And I have a question for our assistant corp counsel here, too, about, is this a moot point that we're even discussing this curb cut? Is it with restrictions? Where do we stand on even being, having the ability to authorize it through a site plan?
And I would be recommending my recommendations that the planning board do honor the restriction that is-
Yeah.
Based on what they said.
Yeah.
Or because it is in the map that was basically determined by this board's process. If that is there, then I think it's a good report.
Did everybody understand that? We're talking about, I asked if it was a moot point to even discuss allowing traffic to come out through that curb cut onto Roosevelt Avenue. And Matt's opinion is, is that we honor what the current deed restriction is that was already agreed to with our decision that we make here for that. So that's the city's opinion, that we honor that deed restriction, not allowing traffic to come out there. So we can discuss alternatives, I don't know what there is to-
I wanted to just ask the applicant, the property owner, what kind of numbers do you expect, like, in terms of vehicle traffic maneuvers in and out on an hourly basis? Like, how many vehicles do you think are gonna be exiting during heavy peak hours? Do you have numbers?
I don't have any number because I'm there only a couple months.
Okay.
But, you know, we get a car, we're gonna give a service for like thirty minutes, one hour, maybe three hours, depending-
So maybe one every thirty minutes in and out, is that as a maximum, is, or?
No, every car is different.
Okay.
One car come for inspection, New York State Inspection, take me maybe thirty minutes, maybe other car come for a tune-up, maybe take me three, four hours.
Would a lot of people be dropping vehicles off early in the morning and then coming back later to pick them up, or would they be waiting on site while the vehicle's being serviced?
Yeah, some make appointment, they drive in the morning and pick up by lunchtime.
Okay.
And some people, they come just for inspection, take maybe fifteen, thirty minutes depending on the car, and they be gone in fifteen, thirty minutes from there. But the problem is, I'm gonna lose business if we don't open on the side driveway, why? Because sometimes myself take me two red lights, three red lights to go out there because there's a lot of traffic, it's two blocks sometimes the traffic there.
Right.
If I take three lights, that'd be where, ten, fifteen minutes I have to wait there to go out, I'm gonna lose customers because they're not gonna come to my business for that, because they have to wait a long time there. We open on the side, they go out and in, and we don't gonna stop the traffic because we have to stop the two lines, then we can go out-
Right.
To make a right turn.
I'm not trying to get into a legalese thing here, but this is something you probably should have investigated, I don't know if you did, before you bought, before you bought there, you know, that you didn't have access out to that.
Yes, but, you know, I try to do our business, I try to-
I get it, I get it.
You know, we have to find a way to-
And we're trying to make this work, we're not here to prevent this from happening, so.
Because before was fine, but now with the new traffic light there, it takes longer. They make a big change there.
The big thing here is there was no problem until they did the new light. So that should be taken into account, is that in the deed restriction, that they changed the lights?
No.
Yeah, before was fine, no problem when I was looking that properly, but after they changed.
So, I mean, here's what's gonna happen, if we have to, go ahead.
With the existing building, do you, there's, there are garage doors on the front, so there's two, it looks like two garage doors on the front, so you have two bays access there. There also seems to be a bay from the side where the larger parking area is. You use that, is that door used? Do you, that's a third bay in the back?
It's one side and one on the other side.
Okay, all right, so you use all of those bays? Okay. I mean, my thought was maybe thinking about combining all three parcels and maybe adding to the existing structure, and maybe creating, and I don't, you know, this might not go over well either, but another thought that we had talked about internally was maybe allowing exiting onto Manor Place as an exit, then coming out to Roosevelt and turning up that way. I think without, and I understand your issue with exiting onto Roosevelt and not, you know, because people I think are gonna exit Albany Avenue, and they're gonna turn, and they're gonna go down Roosevelt, and they're gonna meander through. I mean, that's just human nature, I think that's what's gonna happen. So I was just trying to think of maybe a way to restructure the site and the plan to see if there's a way we can accommodate it.
We have access to Manor Place as an egress?
Well, we, by right, we do. I mean, if-
I don't know, the neighbors are gonna like that.
But there's not restriction on the deed.
Very important point, though, this deed restriction was put way before this light was put in, or this light was set up. So there was a hardship put on recently that's being ignored. That's very important.
So I think the, I see your position, and it doesn't seem like it's gonna change. What we were trying to avoid is impacting negatively the residential neighborhood, but, you know, if that doesn't have a deed restriction, then they'll be impacted, so, yeah.
A neighbor complained me about one tree in the back, and you think they don't gonna complain me about the traffic? For one tree, they complain me.
Yeah.
I'm not against this project, I'm not, I want you to know that, that this board is not against, I'm just, we're trying to make this work, and we try to do it. I understand your position about the hardship with the light, everything, but we have a deed restriction in place, and we're being advised by corp counsel on the route that we should pursue this, and then let's find an alternative, you know?
What's the, if someone were just to close Roosevelt, would the deed restriction real still comply? There was something done after this nineteen ninety-six restriction that caused the problem. It used to be not a problem, that facility's been there forever.
I'm not a lawyer, Andrew, I'm not a lawyer.
No, no, but here's the weird thing, we do know though in law, and I do a lot of real estate around the country, that if something changes in the municipality, that causes certain deed restrictions not to work, they have to be revisited. But that's what we do elsewhere, I don't know here, but that's just a thought.
Well, I think there are two paths moving forward. It's either, you know, we bring an attorney and try to, you know, validate what's, what is, you know, what has legal standing or not, or we find a solution. The main objective is for him to grow his business, and he has another business down the road, and to have the least negative impact on the neighbors, obviously, but if a paragraph that was written nineteen ninety-six, based on conditions from nineteen ninety-six, is what has a standing right now, then, I mean, we're here to hear your opinions and-
Okay.
About safety, that's all it is, Wayne.
So, yeah, that's basically the bottom line.
Trying to think of some other solutions, I don't know. You know, I was thinking of maybe putting a stop line back further from Roosevelt, to allow somebody to exit out of there, you know, I don't know, but that's kind of far back.
I mean, somebody, a customer may have to come out of there, make the right, make the right on Manor, or Roosevelt, and then find their way back out to Albany Avenue, not, you know, Manor Place to Manor Avenue to that light, I don't know. I mean-
You know, the idea if this board is okay with an egress onto Morton Place, well, okay, maybe that can work, but we have to do a whole new thing. But the, you know, I don't know, Mr. Jackson, you may know, are they comfortable with cars leaving and trucks leaving on Morton Place?
Manor.
As a Manor Place, Manor?
Manor.
Is there-
Well, there is-
Counsel, is there any restriction to that?
No.
Okay.
They have a ten over, and they're probably shooting with something on left turn only, they're not driving, taking rights and going all through the neighborhood, they're just to the left and then coming right back out on the light on Roosevelt.
That is the objective.
And also, you should probably look and see if there are any restrictions that may show. We looked and we couldn't find.
Yeah, on that.
And honestly, the only-
That one deed, we couldn't, she went back, she said she didn't find any.
I couldn't find, and honestly, the, even the note of the curb cut, I couldn't find it on a deed.
Yeah.
And I found the restriction based on a deed on the same drawing that is referenced to a deed, but, so, an arbitrary note, not even referenced to a deed. If it has legal standing here, then-
But you say it is on a deed.
No.
Every deed of all the houses of Roosevelt Park have that same restriction on it?
On Roosevelt, no, no Manor. Manor doesn't have, at least as far as I know.
But the parcel with this property that fronts on Manor Place and didn't have a residence on it, right, that was a commercial, I think that was a commercial.
They're all zoned commercial.
Well, they're zoned commercial, but I don't know if there was, prior to it being zoned commercial, was there ever a residential use on that property originally, and that's where the Roosevelt Park deed covenants typically come into play. When there were residential homes, those deeds had these covenants put into them.
Yeah, and I looked and I looked and looked.
And into it with Quick Check.
And, yeah, in the Ulster County deed search, and from Lemmerow, what, Lemmerow? Is that the last name?
Oh, bro.
Yeah, they had-
Lemmerow.
Yeah, so they had tons and tons of land around, and then they, you know, they decided to put their own restrictions on them, so.
Yeah. Okay. I mean, I didn't go back, you know, I didn't do the search, so, yeah, that's the only possibility that it would pop up.
So do they have the ability to go off into Manor Place if that building wasn't there, like, or repositioned, is that, is there any, there's no restrictions on that?
We don't know of any, we're not aware of any.
So, I mean, we can, Robert suggested a site visit, too, but, you know, you have an alternative there, if that's the case, you can go to Manor Place if you wanna reposition that building. I don't know if your client wants to do that, I don't know the lay of the land, you know, Robert's suggesting a site visit to-
He's very upset, no.
Yeah.
And I really mean it, that we want, we wanna make this happen, so, you know.
Efren, if he egressed on Morton Place?
Manor Place.
God, I'm in the wrong, Kingston? No. So he could possibly let that work, but we'd have to figure out, you're saying add on to the existing building, these are two different businesses.
It was just a thought, you know, trying to utilize the space, because it's kind of an awkward-shaped lot, you know, in the back there. It would keep, you know, more of the noise and the commercial activity more towards the Albany Avenue side. It would probably allow you maybe to build up a little bit bigger buffer between the residential and the commercial, but then you could also, because your other side use is the, that's United Cerebral Palsy, right? Or Ulster Green ARC.
Yeah, ARC, yeah.
So you've got, you know, so they've, they go basically through to Manor Place, too, so you, you know, I don't know that it would be so horrible and then have a left turn only there to go out to Roosevelt.
Big concern, cars, no problem, but this lot has small trucks, now, the trucks will probably have less turnover than the cars by a long shot because they take a long time to work on. So as long as, is there a community organization there we have to address?
Well, this is, so this would be an ass of right, because, and again, I couldn't find any deed restrictions, and I looked to the best of my abilities, and there is, in the zoning code, there is nothing that says that you cannot make a left or a right turn onto a residential area from a commercial. So in my eyes, it would be an ass of right. But, again, those are based on what I found, on the deeds that I found from the Lemmerow family.
And we're not getting any pushback from corp counsel on this, so, right?
You know, I mean, it would be, you know, some signage, and it could even, even, not only left turn only, but, you know, exit for south on Albany Avenue, you know, that kind of thing, so that you're not encouraging people to go, so they know that if they go out that way, they're really going south, or north, rather, whatever.
The objective is safety, so.
I don't know. Right, one way out, no enter, exit only.
What if they live in the neighborhood and they wanna go to the shop?
And they have to, they gotta drive to Reinbeck and then come in, yeah.
Okay, then there was an issue with the stormwater. Oh, if we wanna move to the next step.
Yeah, no, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
The stormwater, we proposed some catch basins, and then the overflow was gonna go into the sewer line on Manor Place. But then we revisited the plan with our engineer, who's Dennis Doyle, he went and Efren dug out some holes, he went to see the soil, it's a medium sand, so it's quite good for absorbance. And Dennis said that we could retain the water, we just need to work on the plan, and, you know, we just didn't, we just got the notes today, and we couldn't, and again, we need to figure out the exits, but, yeah, that's on the works.
Yeah, I mean, did Dennis do, did you do soil tests, or what did Dennis do? I saw the email, but I didn't get it earlier, so I only saw it when I got your email before the meeting.
Well, he's-
Doyle knew the area, because he's done it, and Dennis Larios did the test, and we saw him today.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dennis, did I say Dennis Doyle?
That's all right, Dennis, Dennis, the two Densys, they love it. And they did the soil test, we did the big holes, and they said it's absolutely absorbing, it goes fast.
Yeah, so in Dennis Lario's words, he said, "It looks beautiful," whatever that means.
Okay, because DPW, I think I relayed what DPW had told me, that there's catch basins back there, but they're not interconnected, they're standalone catch basins, there's no storm sewer that runs between some of them, and that's, and they're not maintained a hundred percent, which is why there's a lot of that backlog.
So, so in, and again, this is just, we just did the test, and he just went to see them.
Right.
He said that the older, the stormwater could be retained on site, based on the soil conditions that he observed.
Okay.
We need to do a formal statement for him.
So you think he's just gonna do dry wells on your site?
I believe so, that it would be absorbent enough.
Okay.
That should help the- That should help the storm sewer system not be overloaded.
Yeah. Okay. Do you know when he'll have that done, Sonia?
We're hoping that definitely for the next meeting.
Okay, all right, because if you can, I'd like to have the city engineer just review Dennis's material before our meeting.
Okay.
That would be.
Yep.
Helpful.
Yep, definitely, yeah, I think, he did send a note, but, yeah, we'll, we'll take our.
I thought I might have picked it up. Going back to the curb cuts, on one of the required modifications from the All-Star County plan, I just didn't have to see it on the map, it says they're recommending that the Albany Avenue curb cuts be combined into a single one, is that the plan, do you, do you plan on doing that?
Well.
And if not, you're gonna want, you're gonna want a explanation.
I talked to Ephraim today, and, so, the way that he has, and people have been using the current curb cuts actually works really well for them, and especially with the medium trucks that he's going to bring, they're wide enough so that they allow, it allows it to come in in one way, and then do the turn, and then come out safely, safely on the other.
In other words, the curb cut closes, the intersection will be closed, which is what the county and I know the city wants, but that the two that are there seem to work well for the traffic in and out that's all heading uptown. That way they're not running into each other.
But have you, I mean, have you put that into a formal response to their?
No, I have not, I just received.
We got it about an hour ago.
Yeah, they, they just got the comments today as you did, so.
All right, I just wasn't sure how fresh these were, so, okay.
They did prepare an email response that we got just before the meeting, and we didn't circulate it to board members, it's here, you'll get it.
Yeah, it was very.
All right.
But, it's okay, but, we had some other stuff to do.
Okay.
They're landscaping on there too, they're gonna, we gotta talk about anything else?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Board want to do a site visit, we should talk about that, that would be the only thing that we would need to, if you are interested, are board members interested in doing a site visit to this location?
I may.
Heads up if you are, just raise your hand if you are. I, one, two.
I, I can drive by it individually, on my own, I think, and.
All right, so we will work to schedule a site visit, I'll work through you, Sonia, to, to do something. Okay, and I'll probably, we'll try and do it quickly, so that if there are any issues, you'll have some time to address them, okay. All right.
I, I think the back and forth was productive tonight, you know, and I, I would still want to, you know, make it clear to your client that we want to do everything we can do to make this thing happen, so, and I wanna, you know, wanna make that clear, okay? So, let's, perhaps we'll get some homework to do between now and next month, and hopefully we'll have a different tune at the end of next month's meeting, okay? But I appreciate it, so, all right?
Thank you, everyone.
All right, I'm gonna table, yeah, so at this time, I will make a motion that we table items 11 and 12. Do I have a second? Second by Matt Gillis, all in favor? Aye, opposed, carried. All right.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.
Item, is 14 here?
We're on 14, yeah.
Okay. Item 14 is 560 Albany Avenue, let me write down the time here. It is a site plan to establish a countertop retail and installation business, section block and lot is 48.74-1-5.200, secret determination zone C3, Ward 6, Carlos Lucas Sanchez is the applicant, Fine Star Realty Holdings LLC is the owner. Welcome, how we doing?
Hi, everybody.
Can you state your names for the record, please?
Yes, I'm Barbara Erosia, I'm just helping represent him.
Okay. Okay, welcome. All right, so this is the old Jiffy Lube?
Yes.
Okay. And, yeah, tell us a, give us a, what you want to do.
Well, the owner wants to keep everything the way it is, so if we ever leave, so basically, we're gonna, like, not use the downstairs, I think I gave you the filtration system in there, that's the only thing that we're putting down.
What do you mean the downstairs, you mean the pit?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and we're gonna just, it's mostly cosmetic, we're just gonna paint, lay a floor, but I don't know if we put it in there, we do have to put a dummy wall up to divide where the showroom will be and where they will fabricate.
Okay.
And we're leaving everything the way it is, because he doesn't really want it to be changed.
So, like, with the pits, how do you secure those from people, or what do you get?
They have big grates downstairs that we're gonna put on there, and then we're gonna cover it with plyboard and stuff, and then, yeah.
Okay.
And the dummy wall is not gonna have any electric, no plumbing, and we could take it down if we leave, because, you know, but there's no structural, there's just that dummy wall and paint and floors.
It's just like a petition type wall, that's a movable petition wall, is really kind of what you're talking about.
Correct, just to separate where they'll fabricate and where, you know, the showroom will be.
All right, so my, so my next question ties into, like, how, how traffic flows in there, deliveries are made, do you have access from Rentham Street too? Is there, or do you have a right of way back and behind?
I've never looked, but there's a big parking lot that the owner also owns behind, that we may be renting.
Like, behind?
Right behind the property, yep. I'm not familiar with the roads there.
Okay, I would say no.
But he has a big parking lot behind the property we're renting, that we may be able to rent also.
Okay.
So we, we probably have access to that, because he owns it.
How many employees?
Right now, two, we're hoping, you know.
Okay, all right.
We're hoping to get it built up to have more.
I mean, I'm just kind of curious what, what your parking needs are, because I know that there is a substantial amount of space in the back.
Yeah.
And you're talking also about putting, you know, making some of that some exterior storage area for product.
Yeah, just to put slabs over to the left side, but that still leaves a good four parking spaces, and there's like four or five in front also. I mean, it's a countertop, you're not gonna have like 20 people at once coming in and out.
Right.
You know, so it should be plenty of parking. And again, we may be renting some of the space of the big lot that he has behind there also.
We pulled out, because we pulled out the original site plan for the Jiffy Lube, and it appears that the curb cuts been widened extensively, and obviously, that's not you that had done that. And so my, my question is, for the, for the retail space, how many spaces, I mean, how many people do you think are going to be realistically coming at a regular basis? I mean, do you really feel you've got like four or five spaces kind of carved out on your drawing? I don't know that you're gonna need that many for the retail.
Yeah, we may not.
I, I mean, I would think two might be sufficient.
Yeah, I hope I, I use them all, but.
Well, it'd be great, yeah, I'm not saying that, you know.
Yeah, I'm not really sure, you know, again, it depends how good your business grows, you know, so, but I mean, we do have enough parking spaces, but we are gonna use some of that to store the big slabs in the back.
Right. Are you gonna use those garage doors, like, for purposes of?
Maybe just to bring the slab in and out.
Okay.
You know, because they're tall, so that's what we need, to just bring the slabs in and out as they need them.
Okay, so, delivery of slabs, so you get, how, how frequent would the delivery be, like, once a week, twice a week?
Probably like once a month, maybe.
Once a month.
You know, we're, yeah, we'll probably get bigger deliveries and keep them there.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, again, I'm really not sure, it depends, you know, how much business you do, how much you have to order, things like that.
Okay.
But, there's a lot of, there's a couple access doors for like customers to come in, they don't have to go in those big garage doors.
Okay, is this the, this isn't the business that was operating, like, there was a similar type business a couple doors down?
They have one too.
Okay, so this is not the same business?
It's no.
Okay, all right, that's what I was wondering, okay.
Yeah, no, totally different.
Okay.
It's just that I know there's, you know, good business in countertop making, so, we're hoping to, you know, start up a good business in the town.
So the business would be everything, like, you would go to the site, you would, a home, say, you would do the measuring, make the templates, then make, then actually fabricate the, or cut the slab at this location, and then do the delivery and installation, so you do it all?
Correct, yep.
All right.
Yeah, we would go and make the mold for, you know, their kitchen, and, and the customer would pick out what they want for their kitchen, bathroom, outdoor fire pits, you know, things like that. And, yeah, we would just do whatever they ask, and they would pick out their material, and we will cut it and fabricate it, then bring it to their home, install it, yeah. So we're gonna do like a little showroom with, you know, like a little bathroom sink, a kitchen counter, you know, where they could walk through and see what it would look like, you know, some different pieces for them.
Is there any, like, dust collection?
There is gonna be some, but we do use a wet saw, so it's minimal.
Yeah.
And the business you were talking about down the road, they have like two setups, I heard. We're gonna use three, three filter systems, and we're gonna have a professional plumber come in and take care of all that.
Recycle the water?
I'm sorry?
Recycle the water, the, from the wet saw, it's filtered.
Yeah, it's gonna like filter through that pitcher, the three, the three things. Most places only do two, but we're gonna do three, just to have an extra, just to make sure it's, you know, filtered correctly. But most businesses, they only filter into two different ones. But, you know, there won't be cutting every day either, a lot of it, you gotta polish them, you gotta, you know, all that stuff too.
And the noise that's generated from here too, is that, is that an issue, is it gonna be out of?
I don't think so, because I don't think there's much really that close, and the noise is just a wet saw. That's like the biggest noise you'll have. It's gotta be more healthy than an oil business. Oh, but you know what, the owner wanted me to ask too, is if you okay us to change it to that and we leave, can it go back to being an oil business? Because they don't want nothing touched, you know, so.
To be like a, a Jiffy Lube type operation?
I don't know what she's gonna do with it, or he, they just wanna know that if you guys okay to change it, and we leave and take the wall out, and, you know, leave everything the way it is, obviously.
It's already been there, zoned for.
Zoning changes, but I don't think, I don't know that that's gonna change here.
Because she wants to just, or he wants to just make sure it goes back to being an oil business if we ever left.
There isn't 100% guarantee, because they could change the law, that would not allow that type of use to reestablish, and it, once a new use takes its, you know, takes occupancy, then that use would be allowed to continue, but if the old use wanted to reestablish, if it's not allowed under the code when that time comes, that would not be able to happen.
Okay.
So it's.
But as of right now, I could tell her there's no new laws that could.
Well, there is a new zoning code, so they would have, they should check the new zoning code to be, be sure that the, the old use could still continue to operate after.
Okay.
I don't know off the top of my head, but.
All right, so, yeah, we'll probably paint the outside of the building.
Yeah.
You know, everything's there, we're not doing anything structural, we're just gonna probably bring an electrician and make sure everything's good, but from what I hear from the realtor is that they already had a phase one, so everything should be good a while ago or so.
Well, you will need a licensed electrician, you'll need a licensed plumber as well.
Yeah.
You should probably talk to the building department soon to, to find out what the requirements would be in terms of that plumbing that would need to get put in place for your filter system.
Yeah, we had them there already, I'm working with, I forgot her name, Jennifer?
Okay.
A lady and a man came.
All right.
Right now, we're deciding what to do, she has to talk to her boss, because she said we need an architect, and we're like, for what though, what are they gonna do, we're not doing no structural, there's nothing, she said, just because it's changing business? So, I told her about the meeting, she goes, oh, you're going there? I said, yeah, she goes, oh, okay.
Probably maybe because you're going to some light manufacturing, maybe, I don't know.
She just said because it's a New York State thing, if you're changing from one business to another, but the realtor tried to explain too, to her, that an architect, they're not gonna be able to do anything if you're not doing any structural work, it's just all painting and, and a dummy wall, so really, it's a waste of money, there's nothing they could do. So I'm still waiting to hear back from her.
Well, that, that would be their, their call.
Yeah, she's trying to talk to her boss, so we're already at that point, she said she has a list of plumbers and electricians, and we're gonna go with what she, she wants us to go with.
You're gonna reuse the existing sign structure and, and put a new sign in that?
Yeah, like a wooden sign.
Are you, do you have a sign company that you're working with?
Not yet, we wanted to get all this done.
We'll want to see the final, just submit that to staff, I think, if you're using the same physical frame, then, I mean, I think that can come back to staff, but we'll want to see the final mockup before you get it manufactured. I mean, I would like to limit the parking in the front to two spaces and make it so that I'd, I'd, you can actually see in the picture that Kyla has up where the old, old curb was, where it's been filled in. I, I mean, I, I really think that, you know, it's, the time is now to kind of pull that back to what it was approved, we didn't approve that extra wide curb cut, I think, channelizing that entryway is important.
How many spaces are you gonna require here?
Overall, what was the requirement, Kyla?
Well, it's only three, it's only one per 300 square feet, right?
It's not a lot.
So the five spaces around the back will be plenty?
Yeah, there's plenty there. Yeah, I don't think parking in the front, I mean, I, I see why you'd want to put some parking in the front for the retail component, I think that, I, I understand, and that's why I'm thinking maybe a couple spaces, but I would, I would put them in.
Yeah, because, you know.
Put them straight up to the building is, I don't think that that's, you know.
Technically, it's not taking.
Well, you can stripe it.
That's what I'm saying, I think it should be striped as parking, because otherwise, people are gonna be.
And they could park in front of the doors too, I mean, so they're, they're not gonna be, right?
Well, that's the thing, I mean, you know, obviously.
We do have the extra parking in the back, but.
The site's been modified without planning board approval, and that's my, and that's on the owner, I get it, but I think that that area should not be allowed for ingress.
Talking out by the curb, though, I'm talking in front of the doors.
In front of the doors, I don't think, the parking, the way it's laid out, I don't think is a, a suitable.
I don't understand, what are you gonna put there in lieu of it, just pavement?
I would put them, you, you, where you come in, I would put them this way, I would just put a couple spaces, I wouldn't fill the whole front with parking.
So instead of five, you'd have two.
Yeah.
They have five around the back, she's talking about the ones here.
Well, I, I think the way to resolve this is that, you know, we have a map in our office that is a surveyed map, it was used to do the Jiffy Lube, it has actual measurements, without that, and, and use that to draw a parking layout that's suitable. And, you know, that's, you know, that's the type of base map that you need, you can't.
Somebody's gonna pull and they're gonna park in front of garage doors.
If it's not striped.
Well, if they're striped.
Or they may not pull there, because they're thinking, oh, these are active garage doors too, so.
You can use striping to direct a lot better than nothing.
So we, you want to leave that up to staff on that, is everybody comfortable with the parking issue going to staff, venture good?
It was Jiffy Lube, then it was All-Star.
It was part of Bagnell's Oil, yeah, yeah. Okay, so we'll leave that at staff for parking. Okay. Well, yeah, we need to have it striped, yeah.
We can, if you wanna come in the office, you can get a copy of the, the map that is an actual survey map and it shows the building in place and it shows the ingress and egress. And it's, it's actually to scale. So you'd be able to actually use that to draw a much better layout, all right? And you'll know your, you know your space accommodations much better.
So guess somebody should just do the lines for the parking of what they're supposed to be?
Right. You can use that, like I said, you use that as your base map and then you can put the, the spaces on there realist, more realistically than just kind of squishing them on a, on a drawing.
And staff will work with you on the, the parking layout.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the employee parking would all be in the back.
No, I'm talking about customers going for service for oil changes also went to the back and they drove the cars from the back doors through the front. Goed around the back and.
They, they drove through, right.
Yeah.
Drove through. So there was really no requirement. They did, when the car was finished, when they did the oil change, they'd park it out front. So there was no.
So they, yeah, they pulled it out. You waited. It was, you know, when it was an oil change business, you just sat there. You waited till your oil change was done. They, just like they do in the Hoffman oil changes now in the car, yeah. And then you get in your car and you drive off.
Yep. So there was no real parking in the front.
No.
Do you have anything else?
Well, we wanna see the signage.
Yep, you mentioned that.
Parking layout. What about garbage? How, like leftover product, how do you deal with that? Like the scrap?
Well, there's a closed-in garbage thing in the back.
Well, then like the scrap pieces of.
The marble?
Marble or whatever. What, how do you, what do you do with those?
Do you know that question?
Yeah, we can put like a little dumpster in the back and we can drop it to the main house.
A dump? Bigger scraps you, you keep because, you know, some people want little fireplaces outside. So the scraps hopefully will be minimum. Because, you know, that's expensive stuff.
So, okay, so the, the client buys a eight by 10 piece, I guess. You cut what you need to do for the countertop and the, the pieces that are cut out are given the client can take those extra.
Okay, correct. Most of the time, the pieces stay right at their house.
Yeah, okay, no.
I actually had that done a few years back and I made a table next to my grill out back and a little outdoor bar type thing, 'cause they left me like a little ill. So so there really won't be much scrap at all.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's already in place on the site, but yeah.
Okay.
If we even need a big dumpster, I'm not even sure. Scrap might be small enough just for like regular cans if they provide them. But there is a closed-in garbage area in the back already, fenced, a little fenced.
Okay. So who pick, is, are you, would you be using city pickup?
I haven't gone that far. Yeah, I haven't even gone that far with anything yet, because we wanna make sure we can even get this first. It's been a few weeks of trying to figure all this out already, so.
You, you wanna check garbage pickup with DPW?
Okay.
Okay, to see if they would even do it. They might not even do garbage pickup out that way. You might have to contract with a private hauler for garbage.
Okay.
All right, so.
Or maybe if we just use a can, 'cause the scraps will probably be small, 'cause most is left at the customer's house. We could even like take the cans ourself, right?
Yeah.
Get a dump, get a permit, something like that.
Hmm?
For landscaping there.
Well, we, it's up to the board. We made staff note. What do you think? It has not been kept up. I think now's your opportunity to.
Is there a, the old site plan, did it have a list that was prescribed on there?
I do know there's like a little strip of grass on the left and maybe a little in the back. And the owner already told us we have to mow that and stuff, but that's the only part I saw that I remember.
Well.
Unfortunate.
Yeah.
Huh?
So when you're, when you're discussing the, what are you discussing at staff level with them?
Signage, parking layout right now.
But I'm trying to figure out the original site plan that you reviewed. Where was the actual landscaping?
Sorry.
You're referring to the prior site plan. Where is the landscaping? Cause this is mostly all asphalt.
Between Roberti's and.
There was a row of shrubbery supposed to be going in there and then in the front and in the back, right? It's probably all asphalt now.
Yeah, 'cause I know he owns the big lot in the back too, so I don't know about the side though. But he did tell us we have to mow all that and keep that.
Maybe that at staff level too?
Yeah, but I would be thrilled if they just mowed the lawn. I mean, it's been so bad. But I don't know that you really wanna put bushes out front or anything, 'cause then you're gonna have impediment to sight if you're getting in at Albany Avenue. I mean, there's, there's not a lot of room in that median. Other than flowers, I mean, you're gonna wanna put bushes or trees there?
I don't, I'm not in agreement with having that out front.
I mean, I'm not saying right at the curb. Obviously, there's no sidewalk on that side of the street either in this location, so.
Can we work along the strip here? Is that what you're talking about?
Well, there and, and in this area here, I think. I mean, you have, this is what you're supposed to be doing.
Yeah, I.
Huh?
That's what I'm just, I mean, I, I, I would love to see it landscaped, but the practicality of it is, I mean, like you look at Hoffman Car Wash, they have a curb, a sidewalk, and then landscaping because they're so far into the property because of all the snow plowing and the traffic. I'm not see, I mean, that's, if you put a sidewalk, that entire green space in the front would be the sidewalk. So I'm not sure like that any plant like is gonna survive out there. And I'm not sure that you can put any type of plant above two feet off the ground. I mean, I'm not opposed to it, but other than ripping up asphalt, I don't know where you're gonna put it. What's on the side of the building? Is that asphalt? There's like grass back there?
On this side you're looking at or there?
Yeah, it is. Can't we just mow the grass and keep it neat or?
Parking lot to Sherman.
Well, what's, what does the board think? What do you think?
Please? Yeah, it's gonna like block the traffic and that's not gonna be good either.
Right between.
Planters in the front of the building. Probably keep people from.
So planter boxes in front of the building. You want some, some shrubbery along that grass strip right there? Is that what you're talking about too? Between Roberti's and?
Okay.
That would on staff level, those items. I mean, something to soften the front, maybe under like the picture window, a planter box or something, just so it doesn't look so obvious.
Does that sound good, Sue?
Fine with me.
Okay. So with, we have, all right, so you can talk to staff level. They'll, they'll work with you on that. We've got, they've got an idea.
Also, I'm just saying, I'm also keeping in mind that they're leasing this property.
What?
Yeah, we're just renting it.
Renting this prop.
No, I know, I know. I, I understand that.
Could we do without the planter box under the window? Cause it's, it's a business. Like I don't wanna decorate it too much. You know what I mean? We're gonna paint and stuff.
The other alternative is to go full bore with the previously approved site plan, you know? We're trying to find a middle ground between there.
Okay. All right, we'll go that way.
There's probably a more robust planting schedule, so.
I would say just leave it at staff.
Yeah, we're gonna leave it. You can discuss it with them, okay? And then that'll be, we'll be happy with that.
So that's the other lady, the other application?
What's that?
People that came with me to, to see it? The other application we put in?
I'm not, I don't get what you're saying.
I'm sorry? Oh, okay.
Yeah. That's all your notes, right?
All right.
Yeah, yeah. The other, cause I did two permits, one for you guys and the other one where they came to like inspect and stuff. I was just wondering if that's who he met I have to talk to. Okay.
And you're gonna, you're gonna take off all the signage off the building too, what's on there right now?
Oh, yeah. It's not gonna be an oil business.
All right, we're gonna make that a condition of approval too.
I'm sorry?
We're gonna make that a condition of approval too. All the signage has to come off, the old, the old signage.
We'll be saving all that for them.
Okay.
They don't want us to, you know.
Any other questions from the board? All right. Hunter Seeker, this is a type two action, so no further review of the board is required for that. At this time, I'll make a motion that we approve item number 14 and Sue's gonna address the policies and conditions.
So I have, that's to, parking layout will be reviewed with staff. Signage will come back to staff for review and approval. All existing signs will be removed. Garbage will be by private hauler unless, if the city will not pick up. That will be confirmed by the applicant. Landscaping will consist of planter boxes along the front and shrubbery along the sides. Board's policies six, 12, 19, 25, and 26.
Okay, that is a motion. Do I have a second? A second by Matt Gillis? We did Seeker, type two. So Matt Gillis has a second on that. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carry. Yes, I'll keep in contact with staff and, okay, they'll help you.
Thank you guys very much.
All right, good luck. Thank you.
Yes. Yeah, if I'm not around, Kyla is around. Okay.
You too.
All right, we finally got to you, huh? All right, number 15, item number 15 is to Janson Avenue, site plan to expand an existing brewery and construct a 2,441 square foot, a square foot addition. Section block allotted 56.26-5-32. Seeker determination zone C3, Ward nine. Kingston Standard Brewing Company is the applicant. Esopus Holdings LLC is the owner. State your name for the record, please.
Tate Simpson.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you.
All right. So tell us what your plans are here, sir.
Well, we came before the board in July of 2016, prior to purchasing this property, to inquire about the feasibility of operating a brewery on site and, and proposed a two-phase operation whereby the initial phase would be a pilot, a small pilot system and tasting room. That was approved. And, and then phase two being a larger scale operation in the two Janson Avenue building. That was, we received, I guess, informal conditional approval under the assumption that we would come back in the future when we were ready to do that with a new site plan, et cetera. We've been operating since 2000, since opening in 2019 in that phase one format and are coming back to you guys now proposing the phase two expansion whereby we move the production facility into the two Janson Avenue building, renovate and expand on that footprint to accommodate additional support for servicing the retail aspect of the business and the tasting room, as well as expand the distribution wholesale account side of the production.
Okay. Good you're expanding. That's good. All right, so in the new space here, you're gonna have some tours and stuff going through there too? Is that part of the?
On a, if we did, it would be on a very limited scheduled basis, but that's not the primary purpose. I mean, it would be a, it, it wouldn't entail any additional traffic to the building if that's where you're going with it, because anyone taking a tour of the facility would probably also be visiting the tasting room concurrently. So I don't expect it would, we would have much of any additional retail traffic to the two Janson Avenue building. That would be entirely production space. So about four to five, maybe six employees at maximum.
Yeah. And with the brewing operation currently at 22, right?
Yes.
I think we, we talked about initially was the amount, was there any odors coming off of that?
Yep.
We're not getting complaints about that, right? I mean, so with the expansion over to two Janson, is that gonna, you think that's gonna remain the same circumstances?
I would think so. I mean, the odors that we're talking about are along the lines of bread baking kind of a thing. So pretty pleasant for the most part.
Okay.
So long as we keep on top of our waste stream. But to date, that hasn't been an issue. So I don't expect we would have any additional concerns.
Okay.
We have pretty good relationships with the neighbors, so.
Have they submitted a floor plan?
Yeah.
Okay, they have.
Damn, it's like that 11 o'clock and you get the fake char grilled, char grilled scent, so, yeah. Yep.
Part of our notes here, or floor, floor plan? We need a, a floor plan submitted?
Right. Well, the, the project itself is, is fairly, well, entirely dependent upon approved square footage of this addition. So I came to you guys before going down a full architectural path. I have a floor, a limited floor plan for the production facility based on this square footage, but, but I didn't do elevations. I didn't do any other architectural design work because if I have to reduce the square footage of the building, it forces me to reconfigure the entirety of the expansion, so.
I think Kyla had contacted you about the variance, that you need a variance for setback requirements.
Well, it was my understanding based on reading of the code that we have this existing building on site that we would be expanding and renovating. I think, if I'm not mistaken, it is in section 405-47C that states that a building which otherwise conforms in use, but doesn't meet requirements outlined in that section, can be altered, enlarged, or rebuilt. And that's the situation where we have a, a footprint on, in that space already. There's a loading bay.
Double check that with.
I think the variances for the setback.
Yes, correct. So the, so what you're saying is the, this loading bay that is already beyond the setback that exists, we need a variance in order to renovate that space?
You're actually building a structure.
But if you, the existing site plan, there is a, on the site plan that we submitted to you guys, there's a, on two sides, there's an existing and a proposed. The existing shows this loading bay, which is an existing structure that goes well beyond the setbacks on the backside of the property. And that's been there since the property was purchased. No, we would only be extending forward towards the street. Yeah.
That's what we, we're under the impression, that that's the addition.
That's a proposed loading berth, yeah. But are you saying that on the right side of this, is that already there?
Well, that's only, that's the proposed. But if you look, do you have the other half of this? Because we submitted, this has two sides. It has... Can I come over there?
Yeah, yeah, come on over.
So this is existing. This is that loading bay that is, as you can see, this dotted line there is the 10-foot setback.
So this part is existing right now?
Correct.
And you're going to just bring it out? This is towards the street. So it's going to be enclosed right here?
Correct.
Right, but I think the setback also is on this side here. I would double-check that with the, with Eric.
My opinion based on the limited information I have given right now is that you would still need an area variance, but given that the building already goes along, you should not.
Yep. So I did, I have spoken with Eric Kitchen about zoning from the commercial question and our proposed use, et cetera. He declined to give me much information officially beyond a verbal conversation until he was engaged by the board. So do I have permission then to go back to him and say, hey, I'd like to talk about setbacks and get his official way in?
Yeah.
Great, cool.
And they may even get, be talking by phone. So, yeah, okay.
Ask him also about dumpster location.
Okay.
Because there is a section in the code where dumpsters are not supposed to be visible from the street.
Right, would, but enclosures, take care of that?
Ask him, just make, just get the confirmation from him that if you put an enclosure around it, that he's not going to, he doesn't look at it. I don't know if he will or not. It's been interpreted both ways.
Okay.
So your reason for delay in the floor plan submission is what? I wasn't...
Well, I mean, I realize that...
Yeah.
Thank you, yeah.
Have any issue with the enlargement of the building? It's going to be presumably similar construction, similar look. It's just an extension. I think if he can get, yeah, I think if he can get his zoning in place, then I don't see where this, you know, as a member of the board that I...
Well, I think you're going to want, you're going to want to see final building detail.
Yes, but I think he's got to work on his variances first, you know?
I think the other thing to talk about tonight, which is a significant issue, is the city engineer had given a form of layout. I know Kyla has sent that off to you and you were going to take a look at it. What are your thoughts on his suggestions?
Well, I'm unclear what the suggestion is because most of it involves the city property, not our property. He's changed...
Well, it's obviously going to change your parking.
Well, it certainly would affect that, yeah.
So, I mean, I'd like to, you know, if you're, I mean, we can go back to him and talk about, you know, who builds what. But in terms of the layout, I mean, it cuts, reduces the parking significantly.
Certainly.
And I don't know if that's something, you know, that you feel strongly about in opposition to because I don't know what your needs are there, but I would imagine...
Well, I mean, we can utilize as much parking as possible. However, we're, you know, did our site plan with the existing conditions in mind, if the city has other plans for that strip and Jansen Avenue, then I would love to see those and then we can figure out how we might modify our site plan. I can tell you I don't really have the inclination or the resources to improve public infrastructure as part of this project.
Right.
So that's...
I understand. What about like bike racks and things like that? I mean, I think that it's probably your, the type of use you have might be something that you'd want to consider adding to your plan.
Certainly.
As, you know, an opportunity there, be something else. And the other thing I don't see is, I mean, because of the type of business, do you have any outdoor kind of seating or any plans for anything outdoors?
We do. It's in the, on the proposed section around...
In here? Oh, just this front corner here? Okay.
Yeah, so on the kind of...
Oh, the gravel patio?
North, southwest, the eastern side of the building on the street side is, we have a gravel patio on the, what is it, southwest corner? And then some seating along the front side. Correct, yeah.
And you're really, you're only budding a parking lot right there, right?
Partially. There is the backyard of a property that is actually on Hasbrook.
Okay.
In the northwest corner.
Right.
But there's a grade change in a retaining wall between the edge of our property and that...
But they're not really utilizing that anyway.
No, not at all.
But you're not pulling the patio all the way to the back property line?
Right.
Only, looks like halfway, little over halfway back of the building?
Right.
Okay.
This, I'll also point out that this proposed site plan has an addition off the northwest corner of that 22 Jansen Avenue building whereby we would add a small amount of additional square footage to accommodate an external walk-in cooler and additional bathrooms.
Okay, I didn't catch that. Did you, I didn't catch that with the review. But that would be another question for Eric about a variance for that one as well. Okay.
What are we doing about this?
Well, we'll check with John. I mean, in the meantime, I just wanted to get some feedback from him. We, John had, you know, given us that as a potential layout and we wanted to have the applicant have the opportunity to just give feedback on it. You know? I don't know if, you know, the city has plans for Jansen Avenue to do any major reconstruction work at this point. I haven't heard anything.
I had asked around, but I couldn't come up with anything.
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't know of any other.
Not to my knowledge.
Yeah.
Yep, that's what it is. That East Chester, right near that East Chester. Still city-owned, I guess. So we're going to be tabling, right?
Yeah.
Anything else for him tonight?
Nope.
All right, so any other questions from the board right now? We're going to be tabling because we've got some other stuff to take care, right?
No, I just want to not leave him with hanging. I think generally, we're supportive of the addition. You just have to meet the city's requirements with your variances.
Well, I guess, is it a determination of if we need a variance from Kitchen?
Once that's determined and given to staff, then I think, you know, we would request full architecture, of course.
Yeah. As far as our plan for this project, I probably should have outlined this a little bit earlier in the introduction. But, you know, we have engaged an engineering firm to do full mechanical, structural, et cetera. We have an architect who has, you know, done the initial site plan drawings and would, and has contracted to do, you know, elevations and all the floor plans, et cetera. But prior to conducting that work, I wanted to ensure that we could accommodate a certain amount of square footage to justify the project itself.
Yeah. All right, thank you. And we'll see you again next month, hopefully. And so at this time, I'll make a motion that we table item number 15. Do I have a second? Second by Robert Jacobson. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right.
Actually, before I step away, is there, there wasn't anything other than the variances on the setbacks and the dumpsters that are concerning to the board about the...
No, I mean, and you're going to...
What we'll do is send you a copy of our staff notes.
Okay.
All right? Just jot on that staff notes to applicant, so I don't forget. That's my reminder.
Sure thing.
Does that answer your question?
Well, it does. I just, what I was hoping for out of this evening was at least a path forward. And if that's what it is, then I'm...
I think that we're on that path.
Great.
All right?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You guys have a great night. My back is screaming right now.
Well, we have no applicants, but you can take a walk around if you want and...
Afraid to embarrass myself for trying to get up. Oh, there's, all the cushions under your thigh.
Other businesses have done...
Wood benches are looking good. Oh, I can't blame him at all. I thought the whole suggestion was ridiculous.
We're back online here now. All right, item number... Item 1679, this is bond reduction. 79 Hurley Avenue, request for performance bond reduction number 2. Section block allotted 48.71-2-11. Seeker, type 2, Ward 1, Zone 02. Higginsville Station LLC is the applicant owner. Yes, you signed it. That was the last decision document, right, that came around?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, so we'll go through. I think that maybe we should, we do have to read into record all of the recommendations that we've got.
Well, this is basically the list that was established at the last workshop, which we've updated a little bit to reflect better, a little bit better detail as we understood it. Also, we've incorporated sections of the code as reference so that you can go through. You do need to go through this. If there's anything more that you want to add, if you want to change anything, you can certainly, sections as, that's always an option. I didn't put that in as any alternative here. But you need to go through, you need to think about each one. And whether you agree or disagree, we need to know so we can put a final recommendation together for the council.
I mean, there's only a few, I say a few paragraphs here, so I'm going to go bullet by bullet.
You're going to have to use your microphone?
I mean, I'm trying to talk as loud as I can. All right, so we'll go through bullet by bullet and get a feel.
We're just recording with Matt's phone too, gentlemen.
From the board. That's how it feels. So...
If we're recording with that phone, do we need the microphones on?
We all need our microphones on. You should probably almost eat these things too because it's, you get further away and it's hard to hear, so... All right, so the following is drafted recommendations for the planning board to provide final feedback. So first one is parking standards, which is section 405.16. The first one is lodging should have .5, which is one-half parking spaces per room with a minimum of two spaces. We all have agreed with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Andrew? Good? Chuck, you got yours on too, there? Turn your microphone on.
Yep.
All right.
Do you want them to do roll call votes because there is no? How do you want to do this?
On every, on every bullet?
Yep.
Okay, so the lodging, we just mentioned, this should have .5 parking spaces per room with a minimum of two spaces. Wayne Platt is a yes on that.
Robert Jacobson is a yes.
Matt Gillis, yes.
Use your microphones, please.
Chuck Blachan, yes.
Sage Newkirk, yes.
Yes, oh, and Andrew Harris, yes.
All right, the next bullet is 1. Two and three family residential housing should have a one parking space minimum per unit. Wayne Platt is a yes.
Robert Jacobson, yes.
Matt Gillis, yes.
Vince Arche, yes.
Andrew Harris, no.
Sage Newkirk, yes.
Chuck Blachan, yes.
Okay. Residential with ADUs or accessory dwelling units in the T3 districts should be required to have one space per unit plus one space per ADU. Wayne Platt is a yes.
Robert Jacobson, yes.
Matt Gillis, yes.
Vince Arche, yes.
Andrew Harris, yes.
Sage Newkirk, yes.
Chuck Blachan, yes.
Okay, and the next one is when a consideration is given to recognizing the use of on-street parking regulations, developers should be required to provide a calculation of demand for on-street parking and availability demonstrated. Wayne Platt is a yes.
Robert Jacobson, yes.
Matt Gillis, yes.
Vince Arche, yes.
Andrew Harris, yes.
Sage Newkirk, yes.
Chuck Blachan, yes.
The next one here is there should be a review of the existing on-street parking laws to identify where potential parking may be available to add to the overall numbers. Example being where handicap parking may no longer be used, requiring alternate siding where lengthy time vehicles may remain on a street without moving. Wayne Platt is a yes.
Robert Jacobson, yes.
Matt Gillis, yes.
Vince Arche, yes.
Andrew Harris, yes.
Sage Newkirk, yes.
Chuck Blachan, yes.
Parking demand reduction strategy, which is section 405.16C3. The following recommendations are made. One is the word in quotes, "reduction," should be removed from the title as the purpose of this exercise is to determine the parking demand necessary to support a proposal and not necessarily reduce a number of spaces as this new code is already greatly reducing parking requirements. With that first bullet there, Wayne Platt is a yes.
Robert Jacobson, yes.
Matt Gillis, yes.
Vince Arche, yes.
Andrew Harris, yes.
Sage Newkirk, yes.
Chuck Blachan, yes.
Okay, the next bullet is the thresholds which are contained in this section should be reduced as follows. be reduced as follows. In quotes, including principal buildings with a single building footprint of five thousand square feet or greater, and/or a total gross floor area that exceeds ten thousand square feet. The board makes this recommendation based on the experience and knowledge of the reviews which they regularly undertake, and what they believe to be a more appropriate measure for parking assessment. Wayne Platt is a yes.
Robert Jacobson, yes.
Matt Gillis, yes.
Vince Archer, yes.
Andrew Harris, yes.
Sage Newkirk, yes.
Chuck Blach, yes.
Okay, the next one is the plan, excuse me. The board recognizes that there is language already being contemplated, which would provide the planning board to require a parking demand strategy for projects that fall under the above thresholds with a majority vote. The planning board supports this language being submitted in the code text. Wayne Platt is a yes.
Robert Jacobson, yes.
Matt Gillis, yes.
Vince Archer, yes.
Andrew Harris, yes.
Sage Newkirk, yes.
Chuck Blach, yes.
Okay, and, uh, the, we're on the bullet, the planning, this is the planning board should be in there?
Yeah.
The planning board would support a, quote, "payment in lieu of off-street parking", unquote, system. The establishment of the city would be able to accumulate funds to create new or improve existing public parking facilities. This fund should be for capital improvement only, and not to be used for administration or operation expenses. Wayne Platt is a yes.
Robert Jacobson, no.
Matt Gillis, yes.
Vince Archer, yes.
Andrew Harris, yes.
Sage Newkirk, yes.
Chuck Blach, yes.
Okay. Parking dimensional standards, which is in section four oh five point sixteen D. It would be recommended that the dimensional standards, as they are shown in the table, also be diagrammed out. The board believes that a figure would be a means of understanding layout configurations. Wayne Platt is a yes.
Robert Jacobson, yes.
Matt Gillis, yes.
Vince Archer, yes.
Andrew Harris, yes.
Sage Newkirk, yes.
Chuck Blach, yes.
All right, that concludes our section of discussion on parking. Is that correct?
Unless the board, any board members have any other comments on parking that they want to bring up and discuss with the, as part of your recommendation. Anything else? Hearing nothing, move forward.
Okay, moving on to item S D Waterfront.
It's special district, just so everybody knows.
The planning board discussed, and was of the opinion, that more focus needs to be considered on views from existing neighborhoods in public access. First bullet here, buildings in the S D Waterfront should be limited to three stories with a one-story bonus, with the height overlay boundary remaining as is. Wayne Platt is a yes.
Robert Jacobson, yes.
Matt Gillis, yes.
Vince Archer, yes.
Andrew Harris, yes.
Sage Newkirk, yes.
Chuck Blach, yes.
It was noted that parking under buildings is not included in height. It would be the recommendation of the planning board that parking below a structure be included within the overall height, as is done in other transects. Wayne Platt is a yes.
Robert Jacobson is a yes.
Matt Gillis, yes.
Vince Archer, yes.
Andrew Harris, yes.
Sage Newkirk, yes.
Chuck Blach, yes.
Parking underneath should be included as a building story. It should have a commercial slash shop front along the street. Wayne Platt is a yes.
Robert Jacobson, yes.
Matt Gillis, yes.
Vince Archer, yes.
Andrew Harris, yes.
Sage Newkirk, yes.
Chuck Blach, yes.
Any other comments or suggestions on S D Waterfront?
My question is the second bullet, where we talk about the height of buildings with parking, was that conversation limited to the S D Waterfront? Or were we also considering that across the city?
That's, that is limited to the waterfront section. That's the way it was discussed.
Because we're considering.
Because, in the other section, in the other, it's not. It's already, it's already included in the height.
The other section, it is already included?
Yes, the waterfront is the only location.
That's why it says, as is in done, as is done in other transects.
The rest of the code covers it.
Mm-hmm.
Does anybody else have any other thing, anything to add to S D Waterfront? Okay. Moving on to density. Bullet here is regulating that. The board discussed Washington Avenue as a, quote, "greenway", unquote.
Gateway.
I'm sorry. Gateway, yes, I didn't want to read it. Into the city, and also as an area that could withstand higher densities. They also took note that in making a recommendation for increased density, that there are architectural standards now incorporated, and they also recognized the proximity of the slot eighty street district in uptown Kingston. By providing areas that will be suited to development, the pressure to have impacts on the historic areas is reduced. Looked at the increased density, heights and coverage from the city, and aligned into Lucas Avenue. See map below, then find the areas in transect changes. Now, we had, we had discussed out by the Solos Street, right? That was gonna be a, was that part of that? This boundary here?
Yeah.
Okay. Also, coming in Washington Avenue, we've expanded down Shuang Drive. Went out Hurley Avenue to the, and at these borders, these are all gonna be illustrated as part of the submission?
Yeah.
Okay.
This, this would be the map unless.
So I'm gonna go, if the property's outward going, right?
Right. This would be the map we would submit.
All right. And also, going to North French Street, although it is all way down to Washington and all the way down to Lucas Avenue, so, I'd say, what do you, uh, agree with the boundaries of this particular map? Wayne Platt is a yes.
Robert Jacobson, yes.
Matt Gillis, yes.
Vince Archer, yes.
Andrew Harris, yes.
Sage Newkirk, yes.
Chuck Blach, yes.
Okay, and the second bullet here is uses in the T-three N transect areas. Note for board on April seventeen, twenty twenty-three. The board had discussed alternatives which need to be reviewed in a final determination for a recommendation made. So the first one is limit of up to two units maximum, including ADUs, or section four oh five point twelve K, small multiplex, only allow up to three units, including ADUs, or, the third bullet here is section four oh five point twelve K, small multiplex, only allow up to four units, including ADUs, and that would remove the ability to increase to six units with the affordable housing. So the two units maximum, is that a duplex? Or is that a duplex?
Yes, well, yeah, it could be duplex.
Would be a new build duplex, or?
Under over, could be, yeah, I mean.
Or it could be a single-family home with an ADU.
Correct.
We do, Gold Star.
Discussion. Chuck? Do you have, I mean, there are three options for density that were kind of reviewed.
Can we see it? T-three N?
That's your single, that's, that's what we said was our single-family zones.
I'm in favor of the first bullet.
I'm in favor of the first bullet.
So Robert Jacobson is in favor of first bullet. Matt Gillis for first bullet. Vince Archer? You don't have to, take your time.
First bullet, Vince.
Uh, third bullet for Andrew Harris.
Okay.
Sage Newkirk, first bullet.
Chuck Blach, first bullet.
Wayne Platt is first bullet. And that would be the limit of up to two units maximum, including ADUs. Does anybody else have any other questions or conditions they want, concerns for this particular section? Okay. We're moving on to architectural. Uh, the board recognizes the benefit of this new section to the code, and finds that the board is sterile, and provides guidance for developers and review agencies. One issue was identified as lacking in that one is, uh, the bullet here is accessory dwellings for those ADUs should have design guidelines, which should fit with the character of the neighborhood and the architecture of the existing property. Wayne Platt agrees with that bullet.
Robert?
Can I make a comment to this?
Yeah.
I just, when we say it should, um.
We really need you to talk, because there are only.
When we discuss, we have the character of the neighborhood and the architectural of the existing property, I think it should be the architecture of the existing and surrounding properties.
Well, it doesn't, does it encompass the, the guy, the, uh, the guidelines that are gonna be established for, um, designs in that particular transect where these things are going in? So it'll be part of that.
They look within so many, the way their architecture is evaluated, is you look within a certain distance in either direction of each.
Okay, okay. Yeah, no, then I agree with the board. Robert Jacobson, I agree.
Okay.
Matt Gillis, agree.
Vince Archer, agree.
Andrew Harris, yes.
Sage Newkirk, yes.
Chuck Blach, agrees.
Okay. Any other discussion on architecture? Moving on to uses. First bullet is quarter stores. Remove quarter stores as allowed, used in T-three N transects. And there's a note to the board for today, for four seventeen twenty-three. Staff clarify that any quarter store, wherever it may, excuse me, be located, that offers a controlled substance for sale, such as alcohol, cigarettes, requires a special use permit. Staff wanted to clarify this aspect, as it may provide new opinion for this issue in the board.
I think also, Kyla, didn't, did you say that in the T-three?
T-three N, or, T-three N and T-four N, controlled substance sales are not allowed?
Are not allowed, at all. So they wouldn't be allowed. And then we provided some alternatives as well to consider with this issue.
All right. Alternatives could also include, uh, first one is require any quarter store use requiring special use permit review. Second one is require corner occupancy on premises, in case mixed use, with street level only as commercial. Third option is, uh, rename the use category, quote-unquote, "quarter store" to, quote-unquote, "neighborhood business", which is a term that is used right now.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Fourth alternative is modify definition, uh, scratch it, deleting the word "quarter store" and make it "neighborhood business". A small format commercial or mixed-use building that provides a retail or service commerce use, designed instead of intended, to serve residents of the surrounding neighborhood with day-to-day repair needs on the ground floor, with residential, which is, they're crossing out, crossing out for office uses, and scratching above maybe, this is getting confusing right here now, or no? Uh, which is located on a ground or upper floor. A quarter store does not have to be located on a corner lot.
That would be a neighborhood business. That would have to be changed as well.
A quarter store, pardon?
Yep.
All right, so.
Not an option.
A neighborhood business does not have to be located on a corner lot, C sixty-four oh five point twelve L and four oh five point two, twenty-one F.
So what, you wanna vote on the first use and then vote on alternatives?
I mean, they're kinda all.
Well, we could vote on the first.
Vote together.
Yep. The vote could be just to remove it, that first bullet, or look at the alternatives to.
Well, I think.
So are we, are we voting on it, or are we, I mean, are we opting to also change it in the overall definition altogether as well?
I think we should vote the way we think the use should be, but then, even if the council doesn't agree with us, they have our vote for the alternatives.
So you're saying just remove quarter store from?
No, I'm saying if, vote here.
If we like the definition neighborhood business, to submit that to them instead of quarter store for the rest of the transect. But what do we wanna do with it?
Well, I was just saying, vote here.
That's what I was just saying, yeah.
And then go through the alternatives, so if the common council doesn't like the vote, they at least know what our alternatives were.
Okay. So, so said, we're gonna, you can vote either to remove this from T-three transect, or not, you got, it's up to you, and then go to the, what the definition should be. Is that what you're proposing? Okay?
That's what I'm suggesting, unless anybody else has a suggestion.
Okay. All right, so. Quarter stores, remove quarter stores as allowed, used in T-three N transect.
Robert Jacobson is a yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Vince Archer, yes.
Andrew Harris, no.
Sage Newkirk, yes.
Chuck Blach, yes.
Wayne Platt is a yes. All right, um. I do think that the word, the term "quarter store" was not appropriate for use in the new code.
Well, do you wanna look at all the alternatives? Or just the definition?
No, I'll go down the list.
In the new code, does it talk about the neighborhood store, the neighborhood?
I like the term "neighborhood business", and that's something is in the code right now. I, I think that's a better term.
I agree with that.
Are these gonna be, all these alternatives you wanna vote on now?
Yes.
Okay, so, on the alternatives, first bullet is require any quarter store use, require special use permit review. Wayne Platt is a yes.
Robert Jacobson is a yes.
Matt Gillis, yes.
Vince Archer, no.
Andrew Harris, no.
Sage Newkirk, yes.
Chuck Blach, yes.
Okay. Require corner occupancy on premises, premises, in case mixed use, with street level only as commercial.
Robert Jacobson, no.
Matt Gillis, yes.
Vince Archer, no.
Vince, you, I'm sorry, Vince, yes?
He's, you said no, right?
No.
No, okay. No, okay.
And, I'm sorry, no, yes, no?
Andrew Harris, no.
Sage Newkirk, no.
Chuck Blach, no.
Wade Platt, no. Okay, third bullet is rename the use category from quarter store to neighborhood business. Wade Platt is a yes.
Robert Jacobson, yes.
Matt Gillis, yes.
Vince Archer, yes.
Andrew Harris, yes.
Sage Newkirk, yes.
Chuck Blach, yes.
Okay, fourth bullet here is modify definition for neighborhood business. Would be a small format commercial or mixed-use building that provides a retail or service commerce use designed to serve residents of the surrounding neighborhood with the day-to-day repair needs on the ground floor with residential uses located on a ground or upper floor. A neighborhood business does not have to be located in a corner lot, see section 405.12L and 405.21F. Wade Platt is a yes.
Robert Jacobson is a yes.
Matt Gillis, yes.
That kind of goes a little over two, so Vince Archer, no.
That's a no?
No.
No, okay.
Andrew Harris, yes.
Sage Newkirk, yes.
Chuck Blach, yes.
Okay, and we have other uses still. Extend shopfront district along Fakin Parson in front of Hudson Island Landing and Perez along the East Street. Wade Platt is a yes.
Robert Jacobson is a yes.
Matt Gillis, yes.
Vince Archer, yes.
Andrew Harris, yes.
Sage Newkirk, yes.
Chuck Blach, yes.
Okay. Anybody else have any other issues or questions with uses? Any other, anything else to do with the rest of the code that we have discussed that needs to be submitted into consideration? Okay. So we have, what do we have here now? We got...
Give you a recommendation.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, so the recommendation will be forwarded to the common council based on tonight's And I want to, I want to also say that, you know, a lot of effort was put into this, not just by board members, but, you know, staff put a lot of time into this thing, and Matt, you put a lot of time into this thing as well, and, you know, we do have board members that are, what, alternatives here, and I want to just, I want to make it clear that even though their vote may not be part of the package that goes along to the common council, your opinions and thoughts and, you know, how we crafted this thing means a lot to me, the rest of the board, and I just want to let you know that I, I for one appreciate that, so it doesn't go unheard, so. But anyway, I thank anybody for their time and the number of workshops that we attended, and so, do we have anything else we want to...
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. Motion to adjourn, the second by Robert Jacobson. All in favor?
I oppose.